So the City Council meeting for January 11th, 2024 is now in session. Councilmember Harris will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let the record show that all Councilmembers are present. City Clerk, is there any correspondence not previously received by Council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So it's now time for comments from the public. Oh, do we have a signage? Thank you. Time for comments from the public. Please, we ask that you would please be respectful as you approach and speak with us, and please remember that any person speaking or acting in a way that is disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence. So the first person on the list here is Steve Edmiston.
Here we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. It's been a while since I've been here. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. My name is Steve Edmiston. I live in the city of Des Moines in the Woodmont neighborhood. And tonight, you're going to be discussing and maybe voting on our city's legislative priorities. In the packet, it showed the priorities include, and I'm quoting, airport issues, continue working to minimize and mitigate C-TAC's health and environmental impact on Des Moines residents. This is great because things are happening right now on the very subject of mitigating public health impacts from C-TAC operations. It's happening so fast that I'm reminded of the great philosopher Ferris Bueller, who once said, "Life moves pretty fast, and if you don't stop and look around once in a while, you could miss it." What's happening right now is new legislation in Olympia drafted by our Representative Tina Orwal and our Senator Karen Kaiser and sponsored by eight others. And public hearings on these bills are being held this coming Tuesday, the 16th. That's next week, so fast we could miss them. These bills will help mitigate harms to our public health from C-TAC operations. They are not more studies. They are not more scoping. They are not more consulting. They are action. The bills are super cool. They require the port to share a tiny, tiny fraction of the $80 million annual levy collected from us in King County for mitigation. And by tiny, I mean it starts at just 1% in the first year. That 1% will increase to 10% over 10 years. And if the port at any time raises the levy, say they ask for a 3% increase in the total sum, that's 2.4 million for all you mathletes, 2.4 million, 50% of that increase under these bills would go to mitigation in our communities. These bills solve a chronic problem the port has never solved on its own because the new mitigation will not be restricted to that tiny and shrinking federal contour immediately surrounding the airport. These funds can reach farther out into the remainder of our city. I think tonight there are three things you can do as our leadership. First, vote to include in our legislative priorities tonight our city's specific support for these bills. Perhaps this can be done as simply as inserting language into the legislative priority that is already on the table in front of you tonight. Second, each of you can consider how you might individually express your ongoing support for these bills as they wind through the legislature. They will face relentless opposition from the port. Third, come testify on Tuesday if you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edmiston. Next on the list, we have Chuck Coleman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, interim City Manager and staff. For the record, Chuck Coleman, Redondo Beach Drive South. Speaking to you tonight, representing the approximately 200 members of the Redondo Community Association and as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. I would like to thank the Council for quickly initiating the Finance Committee. The 2024 budget presented in November projected a future budget shortfall. And as I stated in November, if we need to take evasive action to steer the big ship away from a financial iceberg, it takes time. However, I'm disappointed that the staff has made the recommendation to delay including citizens to the committee. Staff report states that the general concept of the committee was previously approved but without details on scope or makeup of the committee. This may be true, but during discussions at coffee with the mayor and discussions at Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, statements were made that the Finance Committee would include citizens' representatives for the express purpose to provide transparency and input. The staff report did state if the committee made the decision to include members of the public in an advisory role, they could do that at a later date. If that is the direction that the Council decides to take tonight, I suggest you add the citizens sooner than later because it's difficult to catch up on the details and reverse decisions made after the ship has left the dock and headed towards the iceberg. With respect to the 2024 City Council legislative priorities, the issues identified as public safety, quality of life priorities are long overdue and should be aggressively pursued. However, I noticed on attachment number two, there is a reference to a funding shortfall on the Redondo Fishing Pier and Restroom Project. I was under the impression that all funds were in place or imminently available, including contingencies to complete this project. Are there sufficient funds to complete the project? Can we please get an updated capital projects, sources, and uses of funds analysis of all the major capital projects in the city? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next up, Victoria Andrews.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, Victoria Andrews from the Marina District of Des Moines. Tonight's packet indicates the Council will be voting on the establishment of a standing permanent finance committee rather than an ad hoc one, and I am delighted about that. However, staff is recommending that, quote, "If the committee made the decision to include members of the public in an advisory role, they could do that at a later date," end quote. Our previous mayor gave the Citizens Advisory Committee a strong indication, I won't swear he promised, but he might have, that residents should have a role in budget planning and decisions. Councilmember Harris's comment on November 9th that citizens would not be able to understand the complexities of a municipal budget was condescending, and it has bothered me ever since. Our community comprises many well-educated individuals with both the education, expertise, time, and motivation to do a diligent job of digesting complex financial reports. And although the Consor Report will not be distributed until March, you already know the importance of citizen engagement, and you have all recognized in these public meetings numerous times, the cities need to do a better job. So tonight, here's another opportunity to walk the walk. Please vote to include members of the public on the Finance Committee in an advisory role from the get-go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Next up, Barbara McMichael.
Good evening, everybody. Barbara McMichael from Thunderbird Drive, close to Mount Rainier High School. I am here tonight to acknowledge the draft environmental impact statement for Zenith Properties demolition permit of the Des Moines Masonic Home. I'm sure all of you understand that there's been intense interest about this for a long time, most recently in the Seattle Times. There was pretty significant coverage. And there's been, I meant to bring the copy of the paper tonight and wave it around, but I forgot it. There's been all-around acknowledgement at all levels of government. I mean, it's not just us residents here in town. The county's been interested in this. The state's been interested in this. The federal government has indicated some interest in this. This building is so significant that there really is no reasonable mitigation for its loss. So if you take a look at our own city statutes, the Council really has no other options than to deny this permit. I'm sure you'll be hearing more about this from other residents over the course of the comment period. I wish that it weren't all on Zoom. I wish there would be some in-person opportunities, but we'll leave that for your discussion later on. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. That's all I have on the list here. Is there anybody that came that intended to give public comment but did not realize they needed to sign up ahead of time?
All right, thank you. I do want to respond for a moment here in regard to the comments about the landmark. The city of Des Moines issued a draft environmental impact statement on Tuesday and is now seeking public comment, but those comments need to be made in the correct form. Because the City Council does not have a role in the CEPA process, comments made to the Council are not recorded or considered as it applies to pending demolition application for, if you make a comment here from the podium. So a link to the environmental impact statement is on the city's website, as well as the link to provide public comment in the correct forum. Additionally, an opportunity for public comment will be provided at the virtual public meeting held on January 31st at 6:00 p.m. A court reporter will attend to transcribe verbal comments. All comments will be recorded and become part of the public record. All of this information can be found on the city's website. Thank you.
Okay, so next we'll, we do not have any, our committees are not assembled at this time yet, hopefully by our next council meeting, so we have no committee chair reports at this time. Next up is the City Manager's report, and I'm going to hand the baton over to City Manager Tim George.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address one issue that was raised during public comment regarding the Redondo Fishing Pier. The reference was made to Attachment Two. Attachment Two, we included that for the Council and for the public, but that was the 2023 legislative priorities. So that's what we had requested last year, and that's when we had the Redondo Fishing Pier shortfall. We did receive funding for that, and the project is fully funded. I wanted to give a weather update. You know, from the beginning of the week till now, we've had a lot of changing forecasts, and our Public Works Department really takes pride in the work that they do of keeping our roads clear and safe for our citizens, as well as our police officers who need to travel the road. So we've been busy all week. We've been watching the weather reports. As of now, it seems like we're not going to get hit as bad as we thought we were. It's going to be very cold, but it doesn't look like there's going to be a lot of snow. But I just wanted to let the Council know and the public know that our staff applied de-icer this morning. You might see those lines on the road. That's what that is. We might get some snow tonight, but we have our Public Works staff on standby to respond if we get significant snow. And we do have staff that lives in the city, so they'll be able to respond quickly. But we are keeping an eye on that. We have people on call this weekend if we need to. So that's a big priority for us, and we're on top of it. At this time, I would like to call Chief Gaetley up to the podium to provide a public safety update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, all the community. This report is in lieu of a Public Safety Committee meeting this month, as we haven't quite stood up the committees. Quick note that this Tuesday was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I kind of chuckle because I know we love to grab on to our days throughout the year. I admit National Donut Day is a favorite. Just get that out in the open. But you know, for me, being the chief, every day is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, watching our men and women work every day, every night, every holiday, no matter the conditions. We do it in partnership with a lot of other support from the Marina and Public Works and Parks and all the systems behind that. But I want to publicly thank the members of DMPPD, and I know they feel your support, and the work they do is important. Looking at statewide issues going on with the legislature in session, we are going to support priorities established by the Association of Washington Cities and WASPIC. You'll hear more about that later today in the agenda. Revisions to the state street racing law took effect. We had some partnerships over the summer where we partnered with other agencies to disrupt and arrest illegal street racing. That will continue. It won't be tolerated. We are always looking for ways to prevent reckless driving and arrest illegal street racing. Tonight's agenda includes a proclamation for human trafficking. We do not tolerate human trafficking in Des Moines. Our officers and all staff receive a baseline of training when they first come out of the academy, and they receive advanced, ongoing training to identify, disrupt, and work collaboratively with other investigatory agencies to fight against trafficking and all the related crimes that go with it. Turning your attention locally to some of the local crime issues, the entire region continues to experience auto theft, car prowling, commercial burglaries, including smash and grabs. We have seen some significant thefts from construction sites, including like light rail or sound transit projects. Thinking to our schools, our hearts, of course, go out to everyone in Perry, Iowa last week where there was a school shooting. Know that we are continually monitoring potential threats to any item in our community, but especially to our schools. We back that up with continuing to provide traffic safety emphasis in around the schools and working very closely with our partners at Highline School District and Highline College and their safety departments. You know, as usual, I just ask that the public take steps to lock all doors, don't leave your cars running to warm up in the winter. If you see something, say something. Call 911. If the hair is on the back of your neck, stand up and get to know your neighbors and your local businesses and know what a partner you have in your neighbors. Turning our attention externally, we're continuing to form partnerships to combat some of these crime issues. I've talked about, we have revitalized the South Substation at South 272nd and the PAC Highway. Currently, our special operations unit, which includes code enforcement, community service, traffic, homeless outreach, getting people services, and their supervisor use the substation now as their primary workspace. So that's where they report to work each day. We've made some improvements there to make it work very well. Special thanks to our IT department, who went to great length to make that a very usable space. So you're going to see more of a presence at that location, and now that we're there on a more regular basis, we're finding that people knock on the door. I certainly hope they weren't knocking on the door prior to us being there, but now that we're there, we're able to answer that door. And it's definitely not fully staffed 24/7. I would not go there if you needed police service, but nice to know that the south end of the city has a more regular presence. Looking at how we kind of provide leadership regionally, I currently serve as an elected member of the FBI National Academy Associates for the Washington State Chapter. This is a group of law enforcement executives dedicated to professionalizing police work and providing ongoing training at a very high level. I currently serve as the Vice President, and then I'll ascend to serve as the President in 2026. I also coordinate for this group a National Leadership Week each year for youth at the FBI Quantico in Virginia. So if you know someone who is age 14 to 16 this summer that hasn't interested in leadership and criminal justice, and they're a go-getter, please send them to fbiinaa.org, and they can apply through this month to attend that program. We will send one student from every state and about six international students to Quantico for a week. I'm in the process of clarifying the objectives and membership demographics for the Police Department's Community Advisory Committee. Some of our advisory members are here tonight. Moving forward, we're going to move into a rotation of two-year commitments and attempt to represent a diverse group of community, business, religious, student, neighborhood, property owners, and renters on the committee so that all voices can be heard. I'm going to post information about that publicly in the coming weeks. The current members, I'll work with each of them to determine what their current length of service is and will be. No one's getting kicked off, not bringing on anyone immediately. We're going to maintain the membership for now and then probably open it up for public applications for membership next January 2025. Turning our attention internally to the Police Department, this week, all supervisors and command staff, about 15 people, participated in a day-long leadership retreat. We were hosted by the FAA right here in town. Thanks to the FBI for being a great host. We set our 2024 goals and strategies, which will be shared on next month. We had a guest instructor that led us through exercises to set kind of baselines for our leadership, our approach, our intentional culture that we're designing, and that's going to be a culture of excellence. We will be completing training modules to come up in the following year that help us understand ourselves, help us to understand each other, and then understand fully how we work together as teams. The goal of this is to increase organizational performance, aid in staff development, and then, of course, go toward the succession planning piece, which is important. This month, I'm excited that we are onboarding for the first time a crime analyst at DMPPD. This is a first for us. This new crime analyst, Patty Gosh, comes to us with a 20-year background in criminal intelligence and administrative analysis from the Washington State Patrol. She has over a decade of practical service with the DEA and the high-intensity drug trafficking area, and most recently, she served as the State Patrol's tribal liaison for government and media affairs. We're going to begin reporting information in a more standardized manner, comparing quarterly crime statistics with neighboring jurisdictions, conducting faster routine analysis of calls for service and crime patterns, aligning our data with how our patrol officers respond, and dedicate their discretionary time, better support complex cases handled by our detectives towards a resolution, and maintain closer communication with other agencies to share information effectively. And I just really want to give a shout out to our current interim manager and our former city manager who supported bringing this position on board and forming this. We have three open police officer vacancies right now and at least four upcoming retirements. The concern with filling vacancies remains the time it takes to find qualified applicants, get them to pass a background check, obtain space in the basic training academy, and then training and fully onboard each officer. This process can take between 12 and 18 months. I anticipate hiring seven police officers in 2024, and we're constantly monitoring staffing and developing succession planning to train for patrol. And I'm also monitoring our records and evidence positions, which are also 24/7 positions. Staffing is going to continue to be a challenge, especially for patrol and records. We will most likely operate at a minimum patrol staffing model coming into this summer and through the next year. That means routinely, there will be one supervisor and three officers on duty as the minimum. This will probably continue as we try to recruit, hire, and train new officers. To aid in this effort, I think it's pretty public knowledge that I've assigned a full-time officer to dedicate their efforts towards recruiting. So I currently have a police officer that proactively recruits and hires officers. And please direct any and everyone who's got a passion for public service to www.joindmpd.com. Thank you for your continued support. It is felt and appreciated, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Moore.
First of all, Chief, thank you for all you're doing and the efforts. You've definitely hit the ground running, and we've been impressed. Quick question. So the Redondo Substation, before COVID hit, the plan had been to get like ATF and their gang task force and those kind of other agencies also using that location. Is there any interest, or is that a possibility in the future as well?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for your support. Yes, there is continued interest. Right now, Washington State Department of Corrections has a staff member that works out of the office with us regularly, and by regularly, I mean twice per week he's there. Some of the federal agencies have been slower to accept our invitation back, but we're in direct communication. I serve on the Seattle FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force, so the lines of communication are open. Use of the space physically by those fellow task force members is still in progress.
And the second question is, COVID kind of put a wrench in it, too. There was efforts to join the different police forces and some of the other agencies to combat some of the crime up on PAC Highway, particularly the gangs. Is there still work? I assume that, I know you're talking to the cheese and so forth, but is there efforts in that regard?
Still underway. I will also say that a partner that emerged that was unexpected to me was the safety staff at Highline College. They have a deep working knowledge of who's moving around, especially on foot in that area, and they've helped with some intel and related actionable items. So yes, still in progress.
Thank you.
I'll call on Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to say thank you for your report. I'm glad for everything that you're doing. I'm glad to hear that the space at 272 and PAC Highway is being better utilized now. And anything that we can do to encourage the other agencies, you know, to do that space and have that cross-pollination, I think is a really good thing because we can a lot better keep track of who's doing what in that area. So you said the people were knocking on the door. Are they bringing you donuts?
I'm not allowed to say. We definitely have a couple of community members in the room that have made sure that our officers feel welcome down there, and that's felt.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Let me get this straight. You know you're going to be president in 2026?
Yes, sir. We have a succession. So you elect onto this board, if you're referring to the FBI National Academy, and it's a six-year ascension. Part of the reasoning behind that for us is it's a part-time assignment, and so it allows us to better succession plan in the organization.
How lovely. So my only comment is that was an action-packed report, and there's a lot to like. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
No other questions? Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate your work and forward movement and noticing even some of the new messaging and logos and different things. You put a lot of work into reaching out into the community, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Mayor. My pleasure.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Just one last thing. I just wanted to remind everybody of some dates of importance that are coming up. So as the mayor mentioned a little bit earlier, January 31st is the Zenith Environmental Impact Statement meeting. That's a virtual meeting, and the information is on our website. On February 13th, at the Auditorium, is the Marina Steps meeting, and we'll be publishing the time of that meeting here shortly. We're just finalizing that. And then another one that I've gotten some questions about is the Consor Study Draft Report. That will be March 7th, and that's a regular City Council study session. So that'll be in here at 6:00 p.m. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So you mentioned the auditorium, you mean the auditorium at Highline for the 213 meeting, the Marina meeting auditorium?
The beach park.
Beach park, okay, thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, City Manager. So next on the agenda is consent. So would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, human trafficking awareness day proclamation. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any Councilmembers who wish to pull an item on consent? All right. Since no one wishes to pull, do we have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Seven. Thank you. Oh, I raised my hand. All right. So consent agenda is passed as read. And then I have a proclamation to read. Is it, let's see if it's here. Yeah, I've got it right here. Thank you. Whereas, human trafficking occurs when someone uses force, fraud, or coercion to cause another person to engage in forced labor, involuntary servitude, or commercial sex act. And whereas, human trafficking is second only to narcotics trafficking in international crime. And whereas, the International Labor Organization estimates that there are upwards of 20 million victims of modern slavery worldwide, with children making up 27% of the victims. And whereas, victims of human trafficking may be young, old, male, female, U.S. citizens, or foreign nationals. And whereas, aggressively identifying and prosecuting the buyers and sellers of trafficking victims is an effective strategy to end the commission of human trafficking. And whereas, assisting victims of human trafficking requires a coordinated community response among community groups, social services, schools, and law enforcement. And whereas, Washington State recognizes a national day of human trafficking awareness, which is designated annually as January 11th tonight. Now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims January 11th to be Human Trafficking Awareness Day in the city of Des Moines and reaffirms the city of Des Moines' zero tolerance policy for human trafficking, and encourages all to raise awareness about human trafficking and work collaboratively with law enforcement agencies and community organizations to combat this terrible crime. Signed, this 11th day of January 2024. Okay, that takes us to New Business. The first item on the New Business list here is a discussion of 2024 legislative priorities, and I believe we have a presentation by our legislative advocate, Anthony Hensstead. Welcome to the podium.
Where he started, Mayor.
Okay.
So Anthony's going to give a presentation shortly. Attachment one in the packet was the draft legislative priorities. Since that, you know, the session opened on Tuesday, things are evolving quickly. We've gotten a lot more information. We provided to you an updated, and that was provided at your seats, an updated legislative priority. Since this update, we have a new update. But, so I'll just tell you that there's an extra sentence that we would like to add in here, but I'm sure the council might have some updates as well, or some wording that they would like to change on other items. So I'm going to hand it over to Anthony, and he can walk through all of these, but then he can also update you on the foil ferry development item. So I'll hand it over to Anthony at this time.
Thank you, interim city manager Tim George, and Mayor Buxton. I haven't seen you guys since all these titles changed, but congratulations, and to you as well, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and newly-elected councilmember Ishiko Grace Matsui. And again, congratulations for those councillors who have been reelected as well, Councilor Harris and Nutting. Tonight, we'll quickly walk through what it looks like is going to be happening in Olympia, and our recommendations on what Des Moines should be focusing on here in the two months ahead. Okay, first off, a quick reminder, last year was a very successful year for Des Moines. We were able to get 3.5 million for the Barnes Creek Trail project in this biennium, which is very key, because that's in the transportation budget, and now bienniums in the future. It's a big problem in actually getting funding for projects that have been approved, were approved. So we want to make sure we get this one done in this biennium as well. Also, we received two different $1 million allocations in the capital budget, both for the Marina Steps and for the Redondo Fishing Pier. Looking at the macro picture of what's going on, that will be impacting public policy here in the year ahead, very briefly, at the federal level, of course, it's an election year. Split control back in DC between the House and the Senate. The level of dysfunction is stunning in many ways. I started my career for several years back in the U.S. Senate, and then I taught U.S. politics and public policy for a few years. And I just want to cry sometimes, looking at what's going on back there. And it's hard for groups like Des Moines, where we want things, and we want to partner and get things done back in DC, and the outlook is not good. I mean, even passing budgets is difficult. So we have hope that the earmark process will be agreed upon again for the coming year, but we don't know yet, and we don't know what those rules are going to be. We will be watching it closely, and if earmarks become available, we may come back and make some recommendations on what we should pursue. But this is a TBD at this point. Also, things that the city has been working on in the past, for instance, on the FAA reauthorization, where Tracy and Matt and I were back in DC here last year, working on that. That should be such an easy thing to reapprove. It has expired. Now, they've, it's now on a 90-day renewal, on what's supposed to be a five-year renewal, and they're trying to work things out, and from what I've heard, they're getting nowhere. So again, frustrating, what is good about the national picture, and is helpful for Des Moines on the national picture, is how much funding was passed in the last couple of years on the, on various stimulus bills, on the Inflation Reduction Act and the like. There are billions and billions in the pipeline that can be competed upon for grants, and we are pursuing some of those actively right now. And so hopefully, through grants, we may be able to get some things that we can't look at for earmarks for right now. But that's the feds. Here in Washington State, completely opposite picture, much more cohesive government. We almost have super majorities for the Democrats in both the House and the Senate, and all statewide offices are held by Democrats as well. It does mean that things move more rapidly here than they do in DC. Again, this is an election year here as well. We have four statewide open seats, including the governor. First time we've had an open governor seat in 12 years. So this will be a very politicized year. Also, of course, all 98 House seats are open, and 24 of the 49 Senate seats are for the state. For the state senate, neither of our senators in the 30th through 33rd are up this year. But there's going to be a big push to get out of session as quickly as possible, also because of fundraising freeze, and six of those senators are running for higher office as well. And so they want to be focusing on what's coming in November, and they can't do that while they're in Olympia. More macro on Olympia. We did convene on Monday, it seems like weeks ago, but that's only four days ago. And I came in late because it was in meetings. Things are very, very busy right now, but shaping up well so far. As mentioned, it is almost super majorities for the Democrats in both houses right now. We are in the second year of a biennial budget. And normally, that means we're talking about very, very small additional allocations to the budget that is passed this year. This is a very unusual year for a variety of reasons. Biggest drivers are two new programs that were approved here recently, the Climate Commitment Act and the capital gains tax. So the overall result is about $2.5 billion more in this budget than was last year, which is unheard of for a supplemental budget year. But that also doesn't mean that all is good in Olympia. As mentioned earlier on transportation issues, there have been massive cost overruns in transportation projects, and for the transportation budget itself, they're looking at a multi-billion dollar shortfall, but that's long-term, on projects that have been approved to be built, but the money isn't allocated yet. And so what that likely means is, luckily, we aren't looking for money in the transportation budget this year, and we'll get to that more here in a few minutes, but it will be difficult to get transportation dollars likely in coming years. And where we should be going fishing probably is the capital budget, as we'll be doing this year, but just for long-term But with this additional roughly $2.5 billion from the Climate Commitment Act and the new capital gains tax, they weren't intended to be this way, but they might be one-time revenues. And that's because of the six initiatives to the legislature that will be, are expected to be coming to the legislature. They were turned in, the last one came in in December 29th. The Secretary of State's office has preliminarily said that they have enough, it looks like they're going to be qualified. And with these six initiatives, Washington is fairly unique in having this initiative system, but it means that the legislature has to do something with these six issues. And it can just approve them, adopt them as law. It can do nothing with them, and then they go to the ballot in November, or they can say, okay, we'll let it go to the ballot, but we're going to put another alternative next to it as well. So what that means is there's very likely going to be, at minimum, six more things for you to select in November's ballot, and it might be 12 additional things to look at. Three of those will have direct impact on the city of Des Moines, and those would be the repeal of the Climate Commitment Act, also the repeal of the capital gains tax, and also on police pursuits, an issue that we have been, tried to be very active on in recent years, and we haven't ended up with the policies that the council and WASP have supported in the past. But there would be a repeal, or there would be a rolling back considerably of the current, or the recent restraints on police pursuits. Now, it's hard to say what will happen in November when people get to vote on these things. I was at a conference by the Washington Observer right before the legislative session started, and one of the main organizers of these various initiatives was on one of the legislative panels, and they were saying that they had pre-pulled these things before they decided to roll out any of them, and none of them had less than a 60% approval rate. So there's a real chance that these things can win. Again, you never know what happens after an election. There's going to be a lot of money spent on these things, especially with the Climate Commitment Act. Billions of dollars are at stake. So, but these initiatives really put a specter over what is happening in Olympia, and there's a lot of concern and a lot of, hard to plan ahead if a few billion dollars might not be in the budget in future years. And again, they're only doing a budget for one additional year, but many of these things, many of these programs go on for years after that, too, and if a lot of funding does disappear, it's problematic. So, recommendations, we have a few recommendations based on what we're doing last year, also based on close discussions with staff and leadership. We are recommending a capital ask, another capital ask for the Marina Steps. We received a million dollars for it last year. We know that with the pressures of costs and seeing how many other projects are coming in, the bids are considerably more than the funds available. We're trying to get out ahead of this and get funding, more state funding towards the Marina Steps, and we may be able to reprogram some bond funding if we can get these funds. So this is by far the biggest project that the city is working on, so recommending another $750,000 in the capital budget for the Marina Steps. Also, for trying to push forward on electric foil ferry passenger technology and seeking a, trying to move this overall idea forward, this has changed immensely in the last few months. Briefly, it looked like there was an opportunity to actually go out and get a boat, and Mayor at the time, Mahoney and myself, were able to connect with Governor Inslee and his staff, and we made a big push for trying to get in the governor's budget. Also, looking at some shoreside improvements that would be needed to be able to charge electric boats and electric ferries in the future. And because of the Climate Commitment Act, and those funds need to go back into projects that help to lower greenhouse gases and ideally push forward new technology. In some ways, this was a very good fit. However, we have a partner in Kitsap Transit who's a year or two, maybe even more than a year or two ahead of us in this process, and after considerable discussions, it was agreed that they would take the lead on trying to get the first boat and a proof of concept going, while we would be supporting and looking for ways to partner and move this discussion forward as much as possible. The governor's budget did come in with a brand-new $2 million grant program for communities who are interested in electric passenger ferries, foot ferries. And there would be very few groups that would be looking in that pool. It would probably be Kitsap Transit and ourselves. And so we've agreed that we will work to try to keep that in the budget, and very likely will be able to access funds for that for planning purposes in the future. So we've kind of tweaked our ask to $1 million in the capital budget. Again, on shoreside planning, what we need to change at the Marina, the electric charging capability to be able to have electric boats there in the future. And advantage of this is also is that if it's shoreside, it's on the capital budget. If we're looking at boats... If we're looking at boats in the transportation budget, and even though there's Climate Commitment Act dollars, that transportation budget, it's going to be tough. And somehow, in the governor's budget, they were able to finesse putting that, that grant program in the capital budget. It may be challenged, but currently it's in the capital budget, and we would love to see it stay in the capital budget, because that's a much more stable place for it. I'm afraid if it goes into the transportation budget, it'll be swept in with the huge financial needs of the state ferry system and other, and other cost overruns that transportation is looking at. So, so we are changing, modifying our ask, and again, these things are changing on a rapid basis, because we just drafted this a few days ago, and then we've changed it twice today. And we will have, we'll have a target moving almost as fast as a foil ferry here in the weeks to come. Yeah?
If I could just add here, so, the proposal up here is what we're recommending. In the packet, we had originally recommended 500,000 for the shoreside development and 500,000 for ferry design. So, we are not going to be asking for that ferry design piece, because what Anthony's hearing right now is that that's not going to be possible, and we're also working, we want to make sure that Kitsap is able to move forward. So, we've amended the ask to ask for a million dollars for just the shoreside planning and design to enable the marina to be able to work well with these electric boats. And then, the other piece of that, so that's what is with this edit that was up on the dais. And then, we have one more piece, which is in the, the last sentence there, which is to seek creation of the larger grant program for passenger electric ferries as proposed by Governor Inslee. So, that's not an ask for money, that's just an ask that we support the governor creating this grant program. And then, at some point later on, we would likely apply for some of those grant funds. So, that'll be the updated piece that would be in this if it's adopted now, and we can provide that language on the screen here shortly.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to see the proposed amended motion.
Yeah, so just, in, so in front of where we had crossed out funding, it's on the piece of paper that we, the single piece of paper, do you have that, Councilmember Nutty?
I do. It's not written in the form of a motion, but I'd like to make the motion.
So, the language that we would include before that states, "Des Moines supports the governor's proposal to create a new grant program for developing foil ferry prototypes." And then, we would eliminate that sentence that's shown on there.
Okay, apologies.
So, I don't think I have.
It's not written in the form of a motion.
Well, is the presentation done, are we done with the presentation?
We can finish, and then we can get back to it.
Before we make the motion.
We just wanted to clarify this piece, so.
Okay.
Okay, beyond budgetary asks, there are several policy issues that I would recommend that we, we focus on, and again, there are hundreds and hundreds of policy issues in Olympia that are before the legislature. Where Des Moines, I think, has been quite successful in past years is picking our fights, because we're too small of a city to engage on 300 issues. We're going to be much more effective if we, if we focus on those areas where we think we can have, we can have an impact, and, and something where there's a direct, close correlation to health and safety or other issues within the city of Des Moines. We would recommend continuing to be very, to look for opportunities where it regards the airport, and really working to minimize and mitigate those, those health, health and safety impacts and environmental impacts on Des Moines residents. There's a, there will be a variety of issues that are, will be related to the airport, some that we know about right now, others that we'll be developing through the budget process and amendment process. But there's, there's a very helpful bill that, that our delegation here in the 33rd have put together, that we'll be having a hearing on Tuesday, which I believe the mayor and maybe others might be coming, coming down for that hearing. And, and on the meeting that I was just, just in right before I walked in here, we have heard that the port is not going to be very supportive of this bill at all. We're working to, working hard to see that it doesn't go forward. So, this will be very contentious, but it would be a great bill if we can, we can try to get that forward. And what, what this bill would do is set aside a certain portion of the port's, port's income to go towards mitigation, particularly on port packages and the like, which are failing, in many instances have failed, and currently, there is not enough funding to replace those. So, it'd be very helpful if a bill like this could go forward. And it's positive that, that it is getting publicity, and there'll be a press conference on this, on this issue here on Monday as well, coming up. So, again, that will be a big area where there'll be lots of, lots of activity. One thing that we have not had here before, that we think there may be some opportunities, is looking to partner with historic preservation groups for what they may be able to do on, on buildings and areas in Des Moines that deserve preservation funding. So, more proactively look on what we can do, and then we'll move beyond to, there's always many issues in public safety. To look, look at just a few of them, there is a good momentum on a potential new local option sales tax that could be used specifically for public policy, for public safety. Also, massive shortage statewide in the number of officers. We are, I believe, 51st in the country, as far as the number of officers per capita in Washington State. So, that includes Washington DC in that, so we're the bottom of that. So, looking at more training slots, because we just need more officers, and having more will be beneficial. And, last couple of years, we've been very successful in some focus auto-related issues. Anti-catalytic converter theft bill was passed here a couple of years ago, and Des Moines was the, was the main driver in that bill. There's a follow-up to that bill, it will also have a hearing on Tuesday. And then, we've been looking at aftermarket muffler, banning the sale of aftermarket mufflers. It looks like this is not going to be the year, again, to get that passed in a short session. We do have some interest from some legislators, but, but again, these can be a multi-year process, but, but we will look, look for opportunities to try to build on that, and hopefully get something moving here in the future. So, that's, that's what we've got.
So, I'm going to pass down our updated sheet here, and I wrote 6:56 PM on the top corner for it. So, we might have a few more as the night goes on. But this includes the updated language on the foil ferry development. And one thing that Anthony didn't mention, just as far as this legislative priorities go, in years past, we've had priorities that were a lot longer. We addressed a ton of issues. We had four or five pages of general statements about priorities and goals and all that stuff, and it really wasn't helpful in Olympia. We would like to keep this at one page, so as we, as we do questions and then as we do discussion, please keep that in mind, that we want to keep this at one page. Keep it with issues that affect Des Moines and that we can actually realistically get done, and that way, it'll be a lot more effective. It's at 12-point font now, we can move it down to 10.
Widen the margin.
Yeah, I think 12 is good. When Anthony sent me this, first it was in 14, and I had to, we added stuff, so we had to put it down to 12.
Strategic.
But 12 is, 12 is fine, so. Okay, with that, that concludes the presentation.
Okay, so, what I'm going to be doing is asking for just a few questions before we make a motion to have a motion and discussion. So, are there any questions for the presenters? Go with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify something. The funding that we're seeking for the dockside or landside improvements to electric ferry charging essentially, are those going to be universal? In other words, can they be used on big boats, small boats, individual watercraft to charge them, or is this going to be specific to larger boats? Or do we know yet?
It would be the expectation that it would, it would be usable for a variety of boats, and it certainly sounds like electric, there's a great future for electric boats. There aren't, aren't really facilities for electric boats yet, though. So, Des Moines could be, become a real leader and a place for electric boats to be, if we actually have the facilities, somewhat on a build it, build it and they will come idea. Great to get ahead of this, and certainly, on, that's, that's the direction where Governor Inslee would like to see the ferry fleet going, but those, those huge ferries will be needing different types of connectors than, than something that we would be looking at, at a 65-passenger and smaller. So, I, we would, we would be looking to be very, very versatile in whatever we would put in at the Des Moines Marina.
So, it would affect not only the passenger ferry, like we've seen in the past, here, we had the demo project essentially, but it would also affect anybody that has a boat in the marina, the boat owners that are renting slips there, because they would be able to charge.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Anthony, and I recognize that, you know, you're kind of showing up in the fourth quarter to a certain extent, and so, I have some sort of practical, when you say more training slots for officers, is this, can you elaborate what you're asking for, or what we're asking for?
Right, yeah, yeah, there are a couple of training academies within Washington State right now, and what we're asking for is, is additional classes to be added, so expanding the capacity of those academies, so more officers can be trained every year. And that isn't Des Moines-specific, but we benefit by, by just having more, more trained officers trained in Washington State who will be looking for jobs within Washington State.
I guess what I'm getting at is it, is it that there aren't more, enough training slots, or, in other words, if there were more slots, are there people, is it like if you built more classes, there would be more people showing up?
Yes.
Is there demand for people to get into the field?
Yes, getting space in training classes right now is a bottleneck, and so, by, by having more capacity, that capacity will be filled right away.
Okay, cool, okay. So, second, so regarding the whole ferry thing, you know, the power, if you, if we get this money, are there constraints on when we actually have to build something? Can we hang on to it for X number of years? And just parenthetically, I'm just asking because we've done some things, like with the fishing pier or whatever, we get the grant, and then there's like, oops, you know, two years or whatever, and so, I'm, because the technology is changing so rapidly, the ideal would be to get the money and say, well, you know, we can spend it in 2030 when they get all the bugs worked out, you know what I'm saying? Because it might be that it takes a couple of years before they figure out, you know, before you go from, I'm thinking of like, the first PC or the Zune before they had the iPod, that's probably before your, you know, but.
No, no, I'm familiar with them.
You see what I'm getting at here, you know, because I just, or do we have to spend this money typically on these kinds of grants?
Yeah, 2030 would be pushing it.
Well, I just pulled that.
Yes, yeah, no, no, understood. In an ideal world, they would like to see us spend every dime within the biennium that we have asked, asked for the funding. That being said, it does happen relatively regularly that, that there are delays, and you can push it out another biennium. Pretty tough to push it beyond, beyond that.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way for us to advocate for a longer window for this kind of stuff, because the technology is in flux? You know, if you could bank the money, it would be, not invest it, but, okay, never mind.
And we can't really.
Okay, so regarding HB 2103, just FYI, that, that bill was originally proposed in like 1977, the basic concept of, of taking a portion of the property tax levy and guaranteeing it and making it progressive, that, I mean, the phrase at the time was, as the airport does better, we do better. And so, what I'm asking practically is, people will show up on Tuesday, and they've got one or two minutes, you know, to speak.
Right.
And it is about a lot more than port packages, it's about structural revenue, and I'm like, yay! So, do you have any suggested language for people who would testify that would move hearts and minds, or is that a silly question?
By no means a silly question, and certainly, we can talk offline as well, I believe there may be a variety of councilors coming down and maybe coordinating.
Yeah, no, the only reason I asked you, I put you on the spot, is because there will be residents who show up, and many of them will show up for port packages, but other people who are concerned about the environment may not realize that it's like for them, and, and this is really a huge, this is huge, you know, so, so I'm just, I'm trying to think of the guy out in Skamania or whatever, you know, who's never heard of a port package, and, and what will, what will move them to vote for this.
Yeah, well, and I have heard that one of the cases the port is going to be making is, is that it's, it's taking away their, their authority of determining how they, they do their own budgets. So, I, I think also, while pushing for, for the current language to stay there, we could also look at, at maybe adding additional language in the future about if, it's a big if, the Climate Commitment Act continues to be in existence, and if that is spinning off a couple billion dollars a year, it makes sense for some of that to be programmed in for mitigation. that to be programmed in for mitigation for the airport area. And as more and more health and environmental impacts are becoming clear, need for much greater resources is also becoming clear. And if they want to be making the case to these communities, that they should be voting to keep the Climate Commitment Act, let's see that there's something in it for these areas, too.
No, I just want to, just anybody watching, understand that this money is our money. It's your property tax money that you're already paying in. This is just a guarantee that some of it redounds back to the, for airport impacts. So anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah, and very helpful background that this has been around since 1977.
I just, and forgive me, colleagues, but basically, it's been proposed many times. I just, because you talked about the dysfunction at the federal level, I, our leadership is at like the top of the heap. And so, you know, if it doesn't happen now, I'm like, that's why I'm optimistic because in the past, it would be proposed, but we did not have the pro tempore president, you know, in both houses on board. So this is it, so thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
One of the questions that I had forwarded on to interim city manager George had to do with how you prioritize this list that you have for us here. And really, to me, it sort of speaks to what our cities' priorities are. And so I'm wondering if you can speak more about, you've heard a great deal of interest and there's already proposed legislation about that last topic on airport issues. Is this really the priority as you work down from one through five? Or do you work all of them equally? Or can the council suggest a priority list here?
And by no means is this list in an order of what's the most important to what's least important. Rather, what we've, since I've been working with the city of Des Moines in the last few years, what I've recommended is usually starting with those areas where we have a really clear ask and usually leading with the money. Because that tends to be, can sometimes be very critical for getting projects done and it's black and white with asks. If it's a million dollars here or two million there, that's as clear as possible. And generally, sometimes we only have 30 seconds to make our pitch. And we want to make sure that people see, this is what we need, I mean, these dollar figures. So I've always recommended putting the funding requests up top and then policy issues below that. But the policy issues can be in any order, definitely. And usually the policy issues, they're not black and white. And in many of these areas, there can be 12 different bills. And so it's hard to be too specific. And so we write these trying to be pretty general, knowing that different things are going to come up. But just having the general sense and the blessing of the council, of, the council would love to see something that helps in this area. So that's why this is so general and relatively sparse in wording as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that once this is passed, everything on this list, we will expect Anthony to get done. Even if it's at the bottom.
Of course, 100%. And my second question has to do with the changes in our foil ferry development. Of course, it's changed three times since I've been sitting here. But it sounds to me that much of the planning here has a lot of ifs, which makes me hesitant, right? Like, some of this funding will go, will come from Climate Commitment Act funds, which is on the chopping block, and it may not continue in its current form. And many folks are eager to get rid of the Climate Commitment Act. It looks like some of those, we also have relying on someone else to come up with the design, maybe it's Kitsap Transit that will come up the design, but we're interested in doing improvements now, capital projects to the marina.
Councilmember, could you keep it to questions?
Sure, absolutely. So it sounds like there are a lot of moving parts to focusing on just the capital improvement or changes to the marina for funding sources that might disappear for a boat that hasn't been designed yet. I'm very concerned about whether we'll be building the equivalent of Tacoma's Link, which is one, you know, for a long time was, it was promised to be connected to the rest of light rail and it still isn't. What are your chances, do you think, of how high on the priority list in terms of that rapid change? And we might be getting a new governor, like, is this a splash in the pan or is it something that will have some longevity?
Well, the additional roughly $2 billion that is able to be spent in the Climate Commitment Act in this budget is going to be spent in this budget. And the legislature will spend every dime that's there. And all we can ask for right now is what's in this budget. So we don't know what the playing field is going to be looking like in 2025, if the Climate Commitment Act dollars will be there for future budgets. But there's something to be said for trying to get a useful capital benefit from those funds that are available today that may not be available in the future. And it would hopefully put us in a good position to become a center for electric boats in the future. Again, it could be personal boats or smaller boats. But if we have the facility, very likely, we would become a place where people would want to come. So hopefully, it will be beneficial to the marina's functioning in the future. It will become a unique selling point for the Des Moines Marina that other places don't have.
Thank you, it looks like. So I do have a couple of questions in regarding to, in regard to the public safety funding. You said, it looks like it says recruiting there, but I was under the impression that it was several items like recruiting, training, you know, additional officers, that it could be, it's all encompassing, but are you saying it's only?
Yes, it is wider.
Okay. And then, is there a guesstimate about what 3/10 of a percent would be for the city of Des Moines? What would that mean to us if we had that capability?
So we ran those numbers and that would be about $350,000 a year.
Okay. Okay, thank you, those are, those were my only questions. So I'm ready to take a motion. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the 2024 City Council legislative priorities as presented.
And could we just clarify that if it's the 6:56 version, is that the one?
The 6:56 PM version of the legislative priorities as presented. Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, open for discussion. Go with Councilmember Oxiger and then Councilmember Mahoney, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, we're going by the 6:56. And within the other requests, it's the direct opposite presentation as the information on the slides. Here we have it, as priorities, public safety, historic preservation, and airport issues. Yet on the slide, we're exactly the opposite. So we're saying that there's no, there's no priority? It's, do they just happen to be listed separately or what?
Yes, that's correct. The order of the presentation was not the same order as this piece of paper. But there is no priority based on the order.
Okay, that's confusing. I would definitely prefer, you know, the listing to be, because I think there should be a prioritization here. And so, you know, my preference would be the order that was presented on the slide presentation.
I personally would have no issue with that. That's fine. If you prefer to put airport in front of public safety, that's great.
I mean, we're sending a message here about what our priorities are.
All right, so this is what, this is what I think I would like to do for the sake of discussion is first, talk about the topics. Each topic, one at a time, to decide if we agree with what the topic is. Then we can decide on the order, if there's going to be a discussion about order, and then we can talk about the text. Right?
That's where you want to end.
Okay, so first, first order then would be, are we satisfied with the topics? There are five topics. Is everybody satisfied with those? Okay, good. Then let's talk about the order of these five topics. So it sounds like, are you making a motion, Councilmember Oxiger, that you would like to change the order of the topics?
Yes.
Okay, what is your recommendation?
I believe that the airport issue should be number one.
Okay, and?
Pardon?
Keep it the same as it is?
Keep what?
And put airport at the top. So let's let Councilmember Oxiger finish. Would you like to be done for a moment?
I'm done for a moment.
All right, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like, but he didn't make, he didn't make his motion clear. I mean.
Point of order?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Could we call the print copy at our desk, the 6:00 PM version for this discussion?
6:56?
No, this is the 6:00 PM version. This is the original one. And I believe, I don't want to put words in my colleague's mouth, but I believe what he's asking is that the order of these five items should be the 6:00 PM version.
You're referencing the slideshow.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilmember Nutting.
What is being said is that it doesn't matter what order they're listed, they are still being chased after the same.
Yes, but a council member has made an order, has made a motion with a preference, even though that was the opinion of the presenter. If a council member does want a particular, has a particular opinion about how this should be presented, it's a motion on the table. If we do have a second, we need to entertain it. So what I'm asking the council member to do is please be clear about which order you would like the topics. We have five topics, just tell me how you would like them. There are Marina Steps, Foil Ferry, Public Safety, Historic Preservation, and Airport Issues. Which order would you like to make a motion to have these be put in?
Okay, if you, if you, this was the, this is why the pause was made here is that, you know, if we decide that what is the primary issue, then we can go back and we can argue about the rest of them. But if I make a motion that relists the priorities and there is, you know, agreement on the first, that the one should be in the first priority, but not in the second or third priorities, we get into, oh, okay, we're going to keep going back and forth on this. So I would just like to say that the number one, I would move that the number one priority be the airport issues.
Okay, is there, so the motion is you move to have airport issues put at the top. Do I have a second? There's a second? There's a motion on the table. Do I have discussion about the order? Councilmember Mahoney.
I think historically, and I assume most other cities provide the funding requests first in capital improvements and then they go with the policy issues. Personally, I don't care what the order is, like was mentioned before, I think they're all priorities. And necessarily, when those of us that have had the privilege to sit down and talk about these policies with the legislators, which is really this guideline that you're doing, you're going over them all and emphasizing the importance of each. So I don't think it really matters. I think it's more about the content, but that's just what I have there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Harris.
I actually agree with Councilmember Mahoney. I just don't want to.
Sorry, man.
No, yeah, yeah, well, you know.
I wish I had water, my mouth was chilled.
The clock went twice, yeah. Don't urge yourself, buddy.
There's electronics up here, be careful, please.
No, I just, I didn't want to, you know, quell initiative, but the truth is, you testify in Olympia and there are 400 bills and they're all important and it's billions of dollars and it's just, it's all gonna, you know. So it really doesn't make a difference is what I'm trying to say. But just as a statement of our values, that is the reason I seconded the motion because I do happen to think it's the most important. But it really won't make a difference in terms of what passes and what doesn't, so for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any other, I'll take Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember, then Councilmember Nutting, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I've heard over and over again that what's on the page is what our priorities are. There's no particular order in that. We could put them alphabetically, we could put them reverse alphabetically, we could do anything we want. Your recommendation is to put funding requests, because they're more specific, at the top and policy issues at the bottom. I believe that's correct. I don't know that there's any benefit to be gained by having airport issues above funding requests in terms of getting legislation passed, which is what ultimately matters here. Is there any advantage to that?
I, if I can have an opinion, one way to do that and maybe make everyone happy is to keep the funding requests at the top. And frankly, I find it helpful to lead with funding requests. Again, it's black and white, it's very, there are no grays there. And then go into policy issues after that. And then we could very easily move the airport issues to the top of the policy issues. And maybe that would keep everyone happy.
All right, Councilmember Nutting.
I have to agree with Councilmember Mahoney. But I'm sorry, public safety issues have always been my, what I've stood on and public safety in the city. If we're choosing above all else, I'm sorry, I'm just going to stand on that, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui, you haven't made a comment on this, but you're, did you?
Oh, thank you, yeah, I wanted to ask a clarifying question, if you meant changing the priorities underneath the funding or to put those above funding? Because I thought I understood something different there, so I wanted to ask a clarifying question.
I think that the motion is to take airport issues and put it at the top. I think that's our motion.
But based on what our legislative advocate said, if there was any interest in Councilmember Oxinger amending his motion to reflect the preference of keeping the funding requests on top and then moving airport issues up, it's the number one policy issue. I say number one, it's just the highest on the page. You could do that, too.
Okay, so you're, what you're giving permission is for him to amend his motion?
He has that ability if he would like, based on the information provided.
So with that clarity, do you have any other questions or comments to make during the discussion, Councilmember?
I think operationally, I'm not saying that the council says, this is number one and this is number two, and don't go into three unless you accomplish three. I'm not looking at that kind of granularity. What I am looking for is a statement of value that we are interested in as a council to say, are these? say, are these all top-tier number-one priorities? Because it doesn't appear that way on this page to me. Or are they in some sort of descending order that we can rank? Again, it's not necessarily about the, uh, how you do your individual conversations, well, I can't talk about that, that's number two, I haven't done it. But it's about, what do we believe are our top priorities on this list? And so I just encourage that we have some sort of idea, but if we say, hey, they're all equally beneficial, or public safety should be number one, I think that there are some, uh, issues here that already have bills associated with them, that already have some support, so they could be a higher risk, a lower risk, that is. But I'm glad that we have the opportunity to have the conversation about it.
Right, thank you. So Councilmember Oxiger, are you wanting to amend your motion as recommended by our legislative advocate?
I, I will agree to amend it, my motion, uh, but then, and then have the order under the, the, uh, issues as airport, historic preservation, and public safety.
Okay, so you're, so make your motion. That, is that, is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do I have a second for moving airport issues in the policy segment to the top, historic preservation second, public safety issues third? Do I have a second? I have a second. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz? All right, looks like we've had discussion already. All in favor? Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris, all opposed? Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself. So, in effect, we have changed the order, correct? All right, so we've talked about the topics, and we have changed the order. Pardon? We just changed the... Okay, good. So now we are discussing the text, and we will take each one at a time, if you have, if you're happy with the text or not. So, uh, taking recommendations or discussion on the text of these items. Deputy Mayor?
Point of order? I, I moved to approve the, uh, motion, um, the legislative priorities. That motion has still not been addressed, and it was moved and seconded.
So we're in the middle of it, these are, we're having discussion, so we're having discussion about that motion, and the discussion I'm taking in segments, so that, that we don't talk about five different parts of this?
Point of order, Mayor, just call, call off the item for, you know, for discussion.
Okay, Marina Steps. In this segment, is there any discussion on the Marina Steps? Okay? Is there any discussion on the Foil Ferry development text that we've received as of 6:56? Councilmember Mahoney?
I'm in, I'm in support of this particular one. I, uh, I think electric boats are our future. Whether, whether there's the odds that it falls through and some funding and so forth, I think we need to make the efforts to be, put ourselves on the map. There's potential that Kitsap and us could be partnering in some kind of airport run in the future and learn some things. And it's, it's an effort to show green, our, our green efforts. In addition, when we did have the ferry passenger service, the satisfaction rate in the surveys was very high, and it was one of the common questions asked when I was out in the public about when we're going to have another one. So putting ourselves in the forefront and putting ourselves in the position, regardless of where the technology is at the point, and we can always evolve and improve upon it, we want to be in the driver's seat, we want to be the first ones there. And so taking the chance here, especially with these green dollars and, and the support from the governor, and a lot of other entities that seem to be in play, that this is something that everybody wants to pursue, and it's really good for the environment. So I'm going to support it, and I think it's fine the way it is. With the changes on the 6:56 document.
No, I'll call on Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Um, I, I really want you to not have something in your, oh, good, okay, you're safe. Great. I, um, nobody wants to see an electric ferry here more than me. I grew up on an island, okay, and it is the future. It ain't ready for primetime, and I don't believe we should spend a dime on anything that is an alpha test, a city of our dinkiness, okay? What you do is, you wait until you get to iPhone 13, you know, and then you buy in. It makes perfect sense that we should be on this. That's always just been my thing, is, is a question of timing. And, you know, if this moves forward, my only comment is to, to Mr. Hemstad is, try to delay or, basically, you know, some way that we could hold on to the money until the tech moves beyond Windows 95 and into, yeah, you, you saw what I did there. But, but in principle, nobody wants something like that more than I, when the timing is correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui?
I think you heard a bit about my hesitations and concerns about the construction of the Marina side, um, potential for electric vessels here, so I won't go over those again. I do believe that I, it's, it's, it's interesting to imagine what we could do with a million dollars in our community, and I can think of many, uh, capital projects that we could spend a million dollars on, and unfortunately, this would not be my top priority. So for the reasons I listed in my question.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I, I, I think this is a pretty good, very generalized approach to getting this funding. I don't think that timing, I think timing's important, too, but I think being first to across the finish line, so to speak, gives the city of Des Moines a huge advantage over everywhere else. In terms of the technology, go ask the Europeans who are already doing this, and they'll tell you it's working fine. So the technology exists in other parts of the world, it's just about bringing it over here and trying to, you know, hopefully Kitsap can get the boat, that'll work, that we could then reconfigure down to a smaller boat from what they want. There's lots of room to play when the boats come on, and I think that's the technology that we're a little unclear on at this point, and that's not what we're asking for. What we're asking for is something that works on a regional level, because it will allow, uh, you know, boats to charge here from all over the sound. It's something that works at a more specific level, right here in the Puget Sound, because of Kitsap, and we're partnering with them, and it's something that directly benefits the city of Des Moines in two ways. One, we're first across the finish line, and so that makes the, our Marina a draw. And two, is that those people that want to have electric boats in the Marina, we're ready for them. We're already there. And that is directly for the people that want to have boats in the Marina that are electric. All of those reasons say the timing is now to get out ahead on this. And, you know, bringing power down to the Marina is not a technological problem. What it plugs into, maybe, but those are easily adaptable issues. So this is not something that we need to delay. If we can get the money now, and particularly if there's a risk that it might not be available in the next biennium, let's get the money now, let's get the Marina ready for electrification. And so when those boats do come, and they are coming, we're ready to do that. So I, I think this is a, a good, solid request, and a good way to go about this, so I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. Any other comments on the, on the ferry? Uh, okay, go ahead. Were, were you raising your hand, Councilmember Oxiger?
Yes, I was.
Okay, Councilmember, you, you have not gone yet, go ahead, for your first time.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so clarification. I believe the original proposal that came out had this $1 million split into two parts, right? 50% was supposed to go for the boat development, and 50% was to go for the shoreside facilities.
That's correct.
So we've, instead of asking for two pots of 500,000 apiece, we're asking for one, and we're saying we're going to put it towards, uh, shoreside electrification projects only.
That's correct.
So in other words, then, any, any talk about development of the Foil Ferry is irrelevant at this point. It may be that, it may be that the electrification can be used somewhere down the line if a Foil Ferry comes on, but this has nothing to do with the development and the design of a 65-passenger, uh, Foil Ferry, correct?
Well, this would power the Foil Ferry.
Power it, fine, but, you know, we could also, we've, we've also had discussions in the past about the trend in boating is towards electrification of boats. So we would have to have, develop a facility in order to be able to power the boats, I mean logically, okay? But it's not dependent upon the Foil Ferry, correct?
That's correct. But the other, the other piece of this is in, in red, where we're supporting the governor's proposal to create the grant program for Foil Ferry prototypes.
Point of clarification? If I may?
I'm, I'm, he looks like he's thinking, so I want to let him finish.
I, I am thinking, but...
Okay, then Council, Councilmember Harris raised his hand first, so I'll call on him, and then go ahead.
I think a point of clarification actually takes priority over a, a council member speaking again.
Were you offering clarification? No, okay. Go ahead, Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, go ahead.
And, and this is to our legislative advocate. Mr. Hemstad, is our support for the governor's proposal part of the agreement that we made with Kitsap County? Is that a dependent piece?
I, yes. It, it, it's an important piece that I, um, it's, while we're very happy to see that the governor put that forth, I, as, as you know, I, just because something's in the governor's budget, the legislature, sometimes they, they give a lot of respect to what's in the governor's budget, other times, they go completely a different direction. Uh, and there's going to be a, a limited number of groups that are advocating to see this in the budget. Uh, and, and if there's, if there's not a real push, it's going to go away. I, and, and so I, I, I think it'll be important that both Kitsap and ourselves, and we would work at, at getting some other groups to also, uh, want to see that, that grant program, new grant program, remain in the budget.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So Councilmember Oxiger, you're still in the middle of your comment, are you...
My comment? Yes, thank you. My comment would be then that we strike the first two sentences.
They connect to the second, the third sentence.
Not necessarily. But, well, what, what they are is they're basically our argument. I mean, if we, it's, I, I don't have any problem with supporting the government's proposal to create a new grant program for developing, uh, ferries and stuff, but this is just confusing to have this in here with, with, with the rest of it. Because the way this started out was, we were going to put 500, we were requesting $500,000 towards the design of a boat. I'm just trying to make this clear, that what we're doing is, we will support the governor's effort to raise the money, and we will also seek money to develop shoreside, shoreside, or harborside electrification. But the whole, the whole issue of, uh, supporting the design is out of this, the whole equation.
Okay, are you making a motion? That you would like to strike the first two sentences of the Foil Ferry? Are you making, it's a subsidiary motion, we're in the middle of a motion right now.
Right.
And this is a, this is a discussion to pass the entire text here, so...
I would move, okay, I would move to strike the first two sentences.
Do I have a sec? It's a subsidiary motion, do I have a second? Okay, it dies for lack of a second. Do you have anything? Uh, I'm going to go, Councilmember, to the next, uh, Grace, Councilmember Grace Matsui, for your first time on this portion.
Well, this is more of an educational question, because most of the boats that I work with are Detroit Diesel, good old-fashioned diesel. So how many recreational vessels are electrified, 100% electrified? So what is the market for this type of facility that we're talking about?
Yeah, I, I personally can't say, can't answer that question.
Well, I don't know that we know the answer to that right now, but I, I think what we've heard is that it's a, it's an emerging market, and that the push is for ferry development, electric, and, and potentially more boats that are electric, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, boats of, boats of all sizes. I, and, and there, there, there will certainly be many more recreational boats using all-electric in, in the future.
Okay. Councilmember Harris, did you start the question? I'm, you get, okay.
All right, so we are getting ready to move away from the Foil Ferry development paragraph. I do have something I would like to say in regard to federal and state funding that comes down anywhere. It's a message, federal and state funding offer, being offered to anybody is a statement of values. It's a decision saying, this is what we want to do with the country, this is what we want to do with the state. We are offering funding because we know that participants can't afford it. We know cities can't afford this, and so here's money, please help with the value we're, a value, a value statement we are making. In other words, the country is saying, we are moving toward electrification of our boating. And so, uh, there's, in the United States, and in our state, there's a limited number of people who can respond to a clarion call like that. And this, the Salish Sea, there's been a historical huge investment. It's, it's not just pleasure ferries, it's, it's commerce, it's e-commerce, not e-commerce, it's commerce, it's movement of goods, movement of people. We have, the, you know, the Salish Sea has the largest ferry system in the country, and there's only one route south of Seattle, basically, West Seattle, supporting the entire South Sound area. And so this supports greater and cleaner mobility options in the entire South Sound. And, you know, it's like a lot of these tech inventions, it comes out at first, something fun that we get to do, like play with these little toys that light up what we don't realize what we're doing, or when we, we make fu, make funny faces on Facebook, we're actually playing a game, but it refines technology. And so in a sense, if we answer part of this clarion call, we step up to the plate as one of very few cities in the country who can answer this and respond to funding and values that are coming down. We say, yeah, I'll step up to the plate and I'll play, and in the meantime, our city, as we move forward, ends up being the recipient of something amazing, that I, I've never received more organic response from the community positively on anything that we did, our fast ferry. So in the meantime, our community receives something amazing as we move forward in this, and we are working to answer a clarion call from the, from the entire country that's, our legislators are investing in this technology. And really what this here is investing in infrastructure, and it's coming. There's going to be electric ferries all over the South Sound in the future. So I agree with my colleagues who have talked about being ready, being there, ready. Okay, so moving on to the next item, public safety, are we good with this? Oh, thank you for the clarification. Next up would be airport issues. Are we happy with that sentence? Councilmember Harris and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I have a question, Mr. Hempstead. Have you spoken with UWDOHS recently?
I have, I have not.
Okay. So colleagues, the UW, the UW which did the move-up study and Puget Sound Clean Air Agency worked very closely with Representative Orwell and Senator Kaiser last year to establish the first fixed-site air quality monitor near the airport last year as part of a budget proviso. It was $412,000. Yay, that's also something that goes back to 1976. There was supposed to be a network of air quality monitors analogous to the 24 noise monitors and because you have to measure things long-term in order to get to regulation. So they got one last year. UW has, is putting forth a community grant, this is not our money, to get a second set of sensors that they want to place in Des Moines.
Councilmember, I...
I'm getting somewhere with this, okay? I simply am asking the council support, I'm mentioning this because I have an item under new items of consideration. I just want to make aware that they are planning on a community grant to add a second fixed monitoring station in Des Moines this session. And if the council could support having Representative Orwell and Senator Kaiser getting, you know, getting that grant, that would be pretty great. So in one sentence, can the city support University of Washington community grant to add a second fixed site monitor in Des Moines? And the reason...
Councilmember, if that falls under the sentence that's here, that sentence is an umbrella sentence, if that, if your ask falls under that, then that's all we're asking.
The reason being is that in, under new items, I'm going to ask the city to allow...
But that's under new items, let's stick to this.
Okay, I'm just letting you know, just, you know...
This, we need to get through this item here, so, thank you. Are we happy with the sentence here under airport issues? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I would, I would propose a minor amendment. At the end of the sentence, make the period a comma and have the words including HB, and I'm not sure what the number is because that's...
2103.
I'm sorry?
2103.
2103 and SB. Do you know that?
That I don't know.
Okay, and what, and Senator Kaiser has a companion bill to that. These are the port, the direction of the port mitigation funds, that, including those two bills, period.
Is that...
That is a motion, yes, I'm moving to amend, that's how I started.
Do I have a second? Okay, looks like we have a motion and a second. This is a subsidiary motion. Do we, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. And so the wording is changed to after Des Moines residents, comma, including, and then some HB and SB bill numbers. All right, thank you. Next would be, please remind me if we did public safety or historic preservation next on the vote.
Alphabetical, so.
It's historic preservation.
Publics, he said it's alphabetical. So historic preservation is next. You can see the sentence there. Are we happy with that? Okay? And then last subject here, public safety issues. Are we happy with the wording here? Oh, good. All right, so we have a motion on the table in regard to these legislative priorities, and we have gone through each topic, the order and the text of each. And so, without further ado, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. Good job. All right. Okay. The next item on the agenda is new business item number two, creation of council finance committee, and we have a staff presentation for that, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor, very short. The council had made a motion to bring this item forward for the creation of a finance committee. At the time, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of detail and the, the plan was that basically at this meeting, we'd talk about the parameters of the committee. So there's some basic parameters that we're proposing, and I'll give you the brief rationale. So the first would be that this would just be a standing finance committee that would generally meet every month as long as there's issues, just like your other committees. The rationale for that is just that we're always going to have finance issues, whether good or bad, so that can just be a monthly meeting for the council, or for the council committee. That would also mean that the meetings would be right here. There was concern about process and recording and all that stuff, so regular committee meeting would be here, it would be recorded, it would be noticed, all that stuff. The next issue was the scope of the finance committee, and we addressed that in the motion, which would be, we're just suggesting that the finance committee, the, the purpose of the committee would be to monitor the financial health of the city while exploring opportunities to grow revenue and control expenditures. So it's a broad, broad scope, but really it's all about monitoring the health of the city, financial health. And then finally, the piece about the makeup of the committee. We had talked about including members of the public. The issue, the basis for recommending that it just be a council committee at this point is that including members of the public involves putting out an application, having those submitted, reviewed, put forward to the council to approve. And so our recommendation would be to create the committee, and then if the committee wanted to, and that way the committee could meet like this month and get moving on these issues that we need to start talking about now. And then if the committee needed members of the public to be involved, that's an issue that the committee can address at their first meeting and talk about what that would look like. The meeting, all the meetings are going to be open to the public, so if anyone was concerned they'd be missing things or having to catch up, they could come to every meeting. And then that way we can get, we can get moving right away. We're not talking about, you know, we're not debating, you know, five members, seven members, all that stuff. We'll just let the committee decide that piece. So that's our recommendation would be to get this going, we'll set the meetings up and we'll get moving. And that, that would be the city's recommendation, and that's going to close out my presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Would I like to do the same thing here? Take questions first and then we'll take a motion for discussion after questions. No questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to create a finance committee of the city council in order to monitor the financial health of the city while exploring opportunities to grow revenue and control expenditures.
And we have a second. All right, discussion. Councilmember Harris and, go ahead.
My only comment is that I would strongly support allowing public comment at this committee. I think it's something that should be available for any of the standing committees. There are always time constraints, but I think that would be a lovely way for the public to engage on each agenda item as it comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, I did also want to make a comment. I appreciate your, your offering there. I do want to keep to the point of creation in our discussion here, the details of process and composition will come later as the committee is formed. So in order to just get through this, I do want to just stay to purpose, whether it's ad hoc or permanent, and then the makeup of the committee. So possibly, I think I'm going to order this discussion the same way I did before. Let's start with number one, the purpose, are we happy with the scope of the committee and which is stated the last sentence of the paragraph there? Okay, no discussion there. Second one is whether we want to make it ad hoc versus permanent. This, along with the staff recommendation, was to make it permanent. Are we happy with that? Good. And then the third item is the makeup of the committee, and the statement here is, if the committee has made the decision to include members of the public in an advisory role, they could do that at a later date, but the recommendation is to make it council members and staff at this moment. So any comments? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I, although I appreciate what members of the public can bring, if this is a, a standing committee as we are, seem to be headed down that path, then it needs to be treated like the others, and members of the public are not necessarily voting members of the committee. If we want to invite people on an advisory capacity, I think the committee could do that, decide to do that themselves, but it should be a committee of the council and not, and not have public members who are unelected.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
I believe the makeup should include an advisory portion of, of, of community members. I think there's going to be education required, but in this particular case, it's a little bit of a different exception than the normal committees. This is one of those where we're going to have to discuss serious issues, particularly if we want to, we've had conversations, there's a few of us that believe in like adding police and how we do that, and that may require a levy lift or something along those lines. And I think it's going to be important that the community buy into the idea and have that participation, even though they were their representatives. So I would support a committee. I understand as City Manager George had mentioned, I agree, getting meeting, meeting, in the first meeting on the 25th and be in the application process at the same time. So I would be supporting that we have some community members in, as advisory in their role.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
This is going to be one of the very, very few committees that I say should be treated as a standard standing committee, and it should be limited to city council members. I think there are many ways that you can do public engagement around our budgeting process, but in fact, creating, not even creating, but approving the, the budget is one of the sole functions of this council. And so I do believe that it's an internal function to the, to the city council, so unfortunately I'll be going the other way on that.
Councilmember Nutting.
I find myself agreeing with Councilmember Grace Matsui on this. It is, as all committees, it is the chair's sole purpose to control the meeting and to allow any discussion beyond those sitting at the table. So although it is recommended that community members join committee meetings, it's not always the chair's purpose to allow them to speak, but it is the chair's purpose to agree to accept any conversation if, if time allows. So I would have to agree with Councilmember Matsui that we, we keep it as a typical committee meeting, allowing the chair to allow committee, I'm sorry, community members to speak if time allows.
Thank you. Before you go, your second time, Councilmember Mahoney. Councilmember Oxiker or Harris, any comments? No? Councilmember Mahoney for your second time.
So the only thing I'll say about this particular committee, because we'll be finding our way, is it's going to be providing recommendations to the council who do, as you said, approve the budget. And I think it's important to involve the community a little bit more in this particular case, that's all.
Any further discussion? My only, I'm a little bit torn here, we'll see what happens when I raise my hand, but I am of the, because of the immediacy of this and getting going, and I do believe that there's a lot of depth of information that is going to go into this that is, there'll be a lot of catch-up for somebody to do. And so I do agree with my councilmembers that, that have talked about that and the responsibility that we have in regard to standing committees, and I appreciate the flexibility that the staff, we have talked about inviting advisory. My only hesitancy is the fact that it was publicly spoken of, and one of our, one of the biggest things I want to almost overreach in my communication with the community and my transparency and my inviting the community to the table. But this is what I think. I think it's important to get going with full knowledge right away with the experts, and I personally will commit to advocate for community members to be involved down the line. So all I can do is give my word on that. I think it's important to honor some things that leadership has said into the community that's super important. So I'm going to honor that, but not in the creation when it comes to my vote. Okay, we're done with the discussion. Yes, Councilmember Harris for a second, first time.
My, to whatever extent possible, I have wanted the city's financial reporting to improve dramatically since I got on the council. It's heading in the right direction, but it is still nowhere near where it needs to be. There are just tons of things we can do to simplify and summarize the important, the things that really give one an idea of what the pulse of the city is. This is something that councilmembers, everyone has, I'm sorry, have struggled with for years. It just takes far too much time to plow through all this stuff now. And so to the, I would hope that this committee makes it possible to provide that kind of better information, and then you can, it opens up all kinds of possibilities. But we need to make it easier to understand, like really, where the city is and where we're going and trends over time. That's, that's what I would love to see this committee do. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, no further discussion. Let's move to the vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's a unanimous vote, 7-0. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business item number three, request for proposal, request for proposal on the executive search recruitment firm for a city manager vacancy. Yes, sir.
Point of order, would it go amiss to, you know, take three minutes or something, given that, or does everybody want to plow it?
Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
All right, all in favor of a five-minute recess. All right, all in favor of a five-minute recess. Looks like we've got it. So let's recess until 8:15. That's six.
I'm so sorry.
Six minutes. You needed to get some steps in, hi AJ.
I'm sorry.
All right, all right. Do I have to do the gavel for something like that?
No, but it's entertaining as hell.
I get to, yes.
So just FYI, mayors.
Yes, sir.
So this is what a fixed site monitor looks like.
And air quality is what you're talking about.
Basically, I will be proposing that the city support provide one sentence. That what the new centers will need is a 10-by-10 plot of land in Des Moines. Which Tim has already sort of picked out.
Okay, so you talked to this, to city manager about this already?
Yes.
And he?
And he has expressed an interest in finding 10-by, a 10-by-10 spot. And then U-Dub will provide all the funding.
Hopefully.
Basically, we just need to provide the land, and they do everything else.
Sure.
Representative Marwol and Senator Kaisner do everything else.
So how hot is this?
Well, this is the session to make it happen. I mean, they, they.
So what?
They have to, U-Dub has to get their grant application in by 20, the 29th. And they need the city to, they need one sentence saying the city of Des Moines will support this project in their grant application. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Well, what I'm thinking about, three things right now. We have one more long conversation in front of us. And we, the council meeting ends at nine. And we also have councilmember reports at the end. And so I'm trying, and nobody has been educated about this at all yet, so it's hard to... So what you're saying is, are you going to be asking for a vote on this tonight? Or are you going to be asking to put this on agenda, on an agenda?
That's what I'm asking, is to put it on an agenda.
And then it will come, it will come forward with information for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, you want to rename this to municipal facility?
And I want to have one sentence.
It is now 8:15. We're going to reconvene. And I'll wait for our councilmembers to get up to the dais. No worries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business item number three, a request for proposal for the executive search recruitment firm for the city manager vacancy. And I think we have a staff presentation for this item. AJ.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, council, mayor, members of the public. My name is AJ, and I am the Assistant City Manager for the city of Des Moines. Tonight, we're going to be discussing probably what will be the council's, somewhat arguably the council's most important decision, which is the hiring of the next city manager. This discussion is going to be focused primarily on finalizing the request for proposal for an executive search firm for the 2024 city manager recruitment. Next slide, please. While we're waiting for the city clerk to change the slides, members of the public in the council may find it helpful to have the RFP out as we follow along. Because I will be, there are components of it contained within the PowerPoint, and then there'll be other times that I'll be referencing it. And so I will make sure before I start on the slide to let you know what section we're on, so. Okay, so before we actually hop into the RFP for the executive search firm, I want to just discuss a little bit about what is an RFP? What is a request for proposal? And essentially, an RFP is typically used when an agency decides that they need to solicit different vendors to perform a service for them, and that they would like the vendors to provide a proposal that includes their price along with their qualifications to meet their needs. And so to draft an RFP, what it requires for a proposal to, a proposer to respond to, the RFP needs to contain very specific information indicating how they're qualified for the project and their solution to a defined problem, and the value that they're going to bring to the project. This is very general. Of course, for us, we are soliciting for someone to perform the recruitment search for our city manager. This process requires thoughtful input to develop a proposal that will accomplish the intended objective. Because essentially, what we're going out, and we're looking for vendors that are going to be able to assist the council to make a hiring decision. So typical components of an RFP, this can kind of vary. But for the most part, there's an introduction, some information about the agency background, the scope of services, which basically draws, what do you want the vendor to do for you? The proposal requirements, the selection process timeline, how long it's going to take from the time that you put the proposal out to make your determination on the selection of the vendor. It highlights the qualifications and the experience requirements that you want the vendor to possess. Your evaluation process, how are you going to determine which proposal is most competitive? The criteria. There's usually a part there that indicates the city's responsibilities, and we'll talk about what that is in this draft RFP. Some language about essentially, hey, you can send us a proposal, and we may not want to accept the proposal. That's what the right to reject means. And then who do you contact if you are, you know, wanting more information, or who do you submit the proposal to? So that's the contact information. Next slide, please. So in this case, we are working on an RFP for an executive search recruitment firm. That may be a new concept for some people. But basically, an executive search firm works for companies and organizations to help fill vacant executive positions. When you need to fill an executive level position, the firm acts, or the consultant acts as your partner. And they often rely on their own network of pre-vetted talent, even though they may not be actively job-seeking, may be interested in the position you have to offer. So that's what we call passive job applicants. So there's usually two ways that, in this case, that a candidate would get into the executive search firm's database. One is they do sort of like a cold call. So for example, a lot of, and I'm sure a lot of the senior staff members receive the same, you know, often I'll get flyers for openings for positions. You know, other HR directors are now assistant city managers. So essentially, they'll do it like a cold call to see if you, and so that would, that is what we refer to as a passive job seeker. I may not have been actively looking for a role, but ooh, now you've put something in front of me that I'm interested in. The other piece is that sometimes potential applicants or candidates will reach out to these firms and indicate that they're ready to make a change. They may not have told their current employer that they're ready to make a change, but essentially, they say, hey, here, you know, here's my qualifications, here's the type of positions I'm looking for. As you hear of opportunities, keep me in mind. So that's usually how the candidate database is built. I mean, there's some other variations, but for the most part. When people typically tend to use an executive search form, firm, is usually when you're trying to create a candidate pool with active and passive job seekers. So for us at the city, the way that we recruit is typically with active job seekers, right? We put a posting out, it's almost like fishing, right? We put our hook out, and people that are interested in the position come look for the places that we post the job, and then they apply. So this allows the firm to go out and sort of select or be able to start to interact with potential candidates that where it would not be as appropriate for us to do that on the HR side here at the city. Some advantages is that you typically tend to have a more diverse candidate pool for selection. You get, again, I'll keep saying this, you lure some of those passive prospects to your organization. They tend to specialize in more C-suite, which is executive level positions. So they have already sort of a network built of the type of qualifications that we're looking for in an applicant. Next slide, please. Okay. So as I mentioned in the beginning, this is probably arguably one of the most important decisions that the council will be making. And so really, the RFP just starts the process to make that decision, right? So I think what's important for the council and members of the public to think about this more is a phased process. And right now, we are doing the pre-work to get into phase one, which is to release the RFP for the executive search firm. So this isn't designed to have the council, at least at this point in the process, figure out, you know, what the recruitment plan's going to be. Who do we want to interview? How do we want the process to go? Those are things that you'll work with the consultant that you select from the RFP to determine. So in, what we've broken out is essentially, think about it as seven phases. First phase is we'll get the RFP on the street. Phase two is kind of optional. There is some preliminary work and preparation that the council could choose to do for the consultant, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Three will be, once you select your firm, and then you'll work with the consultant to start to set the recruitment plan, and basically, we'll be out soliciting for application, or for applicants, excuse me. Phase four, we'll be at the closing of that solicitation for applicants. The review will begin to start to figure out what the, what candidates that you're interested in and learning more about. Five will be the candidate review selection process. That could be anything. That could be interviews, that could be supplemental questions, whatever it is that will start to help the council shave down the pool to identify the most competitive candidates. Six will be identifying the final candidate and starting that background and references. And then seven would be basically the formal offer, hiring hopefully, a candidate, and then regretting the other candidates that have applied. Is there any questions so far? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this is where this handy-dandy RFP will come in, yeah, handy. And so my thoughts, unless the council or Mayor Buxton has a different perspective, is that we will just walk through the points. If I'd like to just get through the points and then stop and then ask for questions, I do have some assistants in the audience tonight to sort of capture your notes so we can start to make edits to the comments. So essentially, the overall presentation of the RFP, the grammar, the graphics, the formatting, the presentation, the city will take care of that. So once we get the language and the text in, embedded into the document, we'll make sure that it's, has a professional appearance, you know, before we release it out. So that will not be the responsibility of the council. So that's why it looks a little plain, but that's because I haven't put all the dressing on it yet. That will come. Okay, so section one is the introduction and background language. And, you know, open to any edits that the council is interested in having. The main focus of the introduction and the background for the purpose of the RFP, and really for a vendor that would be looking at our RFP, is really what they want to know is like size and location of your city and what type of governance you have. That's, that's really all they're concerned about. So there is a lot of descriptive language about our city that could be cut back, but that, of course, will be left up to the council. So I'll pause here.
In regard, I have a couple of recommendations. In paragraph three, it talks about, kind of, it's descriptive, but I didn't, we are looking for somebody who is going to be taking on a $25 million project over a handful of years that invites, you know, that's a kind of a big economic development project. And there really wasn't anything here that indicated that. So when you're talking to the recruiter, just to key into their mind some verbiage that says, I'm looking for somebody that can handle that. And so I, I thought maybe just right there before it says the Des Moines Marina, maybe public waterfront areas that draw regional tourism and invite economic vision and vibrancy, something like that. Something that kind of indicates to the recruiter, we've got this big redevelopment project, and that's what this person's going to be doing. Then the, down in the, I think the fifth paragraph, it says one mayor and six council members. And I know it does say council manager form of governance, but that, I don't know if that would be confusing or objectionable to anybody. I would recommend maybe seven city council members, which includes the mayor. Because the mayor is a council member? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I have no opinion about it. I just.
All right. Okay. And that's all I have for that section. Thank you. Oh, excuse me.
So tagging on to that, I mean, you, you seem to indicate, you know, that you could make it shorter, and I'm all about that. But I do think this third paragraph, I think it's important that whoever applies understands that this is a municipal marina. Okay? Because most cities, to the people who aren't here, have port districts. We are really unique in having a city-owned marina, and it's a business, and it's like having 800 Lamborghinis. And so, I mean, I'm not trying to sound... And the other thing is, I think it's important for whoever applies to understand that we're next to the eighth largest airport, and it is, and, and dealing with those impacts, you know, plus, minus, is going to be a significant part of their portfolio as well. So, I mean, I just, I want to keep it short, but we're not like other cities in those two fundamental ways, in my mind. Maybe that's not significant, but that's all I got.
Councilmember?
I agree with Councilmember Harris on the first point. The second, I think, is part of the scope when we work with the consultant.
Okay, am I okay to move on? All right, thank you. So, next slide, please. So we're headed into section two, so here's another decision point for the council, and essentially, it's the geographic scope. So, basically, what we're saying here is we're telling the vendor what type of search we want to do. Do you want them to conduct a nationwide search? Do you want them to conduct a regional search, or a statewide search? This is not necessarily related to where the candidate may come from potentially, unless you narrowly focus it to, to the statewide piece. Our recommendation is to go nationwide. I think that it's really important for the council to have a, a lot of competitive options. And I think that when it comes to the city manager role, there's different areas of specialization. And so, having the ability to sort of review people under that context, I think, would be important. I would also say, more sort of anecdotal, on the HR side, since probably 2019, it's taken us at least about 30% more candidates than we would normally need to see to be able to create a competitive pool. And now, when you're looking at a specialized position, you know, you're, you likely aren't going to have hundreds of people that are qualified. So I think the council giving themselves the best opportunity to have the most people apply, so you have a wide array of people to review, also adds to diversity in skill, demographics, that type of thing. And then, potentially, if it was important to the council in terms of where that candidate hailed from, you know, whether they were local, or regional, or nationwide, you could use that later on as a decision point when you start to trim back the pool.
If you're looking for direction, I think nationwide is the way to go. So, that's my only comment.
So I was going to ask you, if that's a question, would you like it, would you like to ask that question to the council right now?
Yes, we need direction to be able to let the vendor know what type of search.
So, I'll just say, would we like a nationwide survey, a nationwide pool? Raise your right hand.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're taking.
Just, okay, yeah, we're not really taking.
Yes, if there's a motion that needs to be made, I motion.
Nod your head.
For nationwide.
Do we have a second? Looks like a motion and second it, and you have a unanimous agreement here for that nationwide search, so.
Hopefully, my note taker got that. Thank you. All right, next slide, please. So we're still hanging out in section two. This is pretty important, right? This is what, what services we want the vendor to provide. So, these were drafted using our expertise in HR and trying to give the council the opportunity to have a firm perform a really comprehensive recruitment. You may decide as the process goes, once you select the consultant, you may want to scale back on some of the things that you have the consultant do on your behalf, but I think it would be, or we think it would be important to at least, again, give the council the opportunity to look at vendors that can provide like a full service-type recruitment. So I'm wondering if the best way to go through this is to just review all of the scope of services that have been proposed, and then, at the end, open it up for discussion or comments. Does that work for the council? Okay. So, I will be working on my reading. So here we go. So number one, we want this person or the firm to be able to meet with city council, that's defined as all seven of you guys, to discuss the process and recruitment strategy, and answer any questions you may have about the process. We might ask you to design and assist with developing a public participation process for you guys, under your approval, so that residents could provide their comments and thoughts about the attributes they want in a city manager. Two, we'd want them to meet with the city council as necessary to either develop, facilitate, or review a candidate profile and a list of priorities for the new city manager. Just a slight comment, the candidate profile isn't necessarily the job description, that's where you identify the attributes and of the ideal candidate, sort of beyond the scope of the work that's required. Three, assist the city council in finalizing the job description for the position, help develop desired qualifications for candidates, and review general compensation and benefits packages that we offer, and any other needed items that you guys, I don't know what that is, but again, that would be revealed after the consultant came on board. You guys are gonna, we would want the vendor to be able to develop posting and the advertisement materials, for example, like a recruitment brochure, and essentially administer a national search, now that we have concurrence on that, for the appropriate candidates, including doing position announcements and posting, doing some targeted postings to hopefully elicit responses for a more diverse population, and then to, obviously, to yield us the largest qualified and most competitive candidate pool. We'd want the consultants to have the capability to act as a direct point of contact for all applicants, answer questions, and collect their application materials, such as resumes, cover letters, and/or supplemental questions. Next slide, please. We want them to be able to review the application materials for education, experience, and qualifications, including potentially doing telephone interviews. The one thing I do want to point out to the council, I did not write this intended for the consultant to screen, that may be something you guys decide to do, but I did leave this basically that they would do telephone interviews to clarify the expertise, or the experiences necessary, if it just wasn't clear from the materials that were presented. And then, essentially, after that, prepare a written summary for you guys of the overall applicant pool, and then identify the most promising candidates based on the relevant qualifications that you guys selected, and any other screening criteria. So not necessarily make the decision, but to use their expertise, because often these firms will have placed other city managers. So essentially, kind of do an initial review, here's kind of the ones we think are great, but ultimately, that decision relies with the council. We would want the consultants to schedule the interviews that you guys select, and then, I just was brought, hey, interviews could be, we might want to do a phone screen, we might want to do virtual or in-person. We don't know yet, but we need you to be able to do all three, if that's what the council decides. We want them to be able to advise the city council on interview strategies and assist you guys with developing interview questions that will solicit responses that you'll be able to determine if that person will meet your needs. We also want them to be able to develop questions for, and this is a little bit of an assumption, but if there are other panels, like the community members or staff, you know, to be able to help work through those interview questions, so we, for the people that are going to have input to the council's decision, that they're able to gauge and provide meaningful feedback to you guys. Number nine is facilitate the interview sessions, sorry, and assist the city council in narrowing down the candidate pool to finalists. You'll notice, again, another theme, we want assistance, we don't want you to drive the decision, so. Ten, once you guys were to make a selection, at least to have the ability to do educational checks, make sure that their certifications and degrees are valid, not that anyone would submit something that's not, and then do background checks, not necessarily criminal, we have the ability to do that here in-house, but some of that civil work, civil review, they could, they could do that on our behalf, and that's fairly common. Next slide, please. All right. Eleven, facilitate any final interview processes as necessary, and assist the city council in selecting a candidate, if you need that assistance at that point. I do recommend keeping twelve, let them tell the people that we are not interested in moving forward with. And then, if you guys wanted, potentially, they could assist with some of the negotiations as you start to work through, like the benefits package and salary. All right. Anything missing?
Councilmember Grace Masui.
First, I want to say, this is extremely comprehensive, and it's great to see all these 13 points here. The only one that occurs to me that I would consider adding, and it's, there's, can be finessed certainly, is what kind of public engagement, similar to what we did with Chief Gaitley, if there's going to be public sessions, forums, times that other folks can meet with potential candidates, and whether that should be facilitated by this executive search firm, or if that's something we would prefer staff to organize, is kind of a question for the group. Thank you for this, though.
Well, is that number one, councilmember? Is that covered in number one? If you read.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, as I kind of envision this process, I suppose, is that there's a, there's a first part early on, which is addressed here in number one, so do we want to develop a public participation process to, you know, give the thoughts about the attributes they want to see? So again, this is going into the ideal candidate, not individuals. Much, much later on in the process, when we've got it down to individuals, I certainly think, and I hope, there will be a public participation process, similar to what we did with the police chief, but I think those are two separate things, and at this point, I kind of think that what's covered in number one is what we're looking for in an RFP, not the second one.
Okay, so are you asking, are you recommending that she add something to number one?
No, no, I'm saying, I think number one is, is good, and I don't, and I heard two things going on in Councilmember Grace Masui's, and I wanted to kind of see if I could tease those apart a little bit, and say, I like this one, and I don't think we're to the second one yet.
Okay.
Is that? I don't know, is, is that, am I accurate, councilmember?
Oh, that's a great question. So let's see, and point number one, may be asked to design and assist with developing a public participation process for city council approval, so that residents may provide or can provide their comments and thoughts about attributes that they want. So this is prior to advertising even. This is, so it may be different than the public engagement of finalists, which I think I was talking about.
Okay.
If I may?
Mm-hmm.
What may be agreeable to what you're suggesting is maybe in number eight, oh, excuse me, number seven, I could blow that out more and talk about community forums, and I'm sorry, I missed the other part that you said, but I did write down community forums.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think that would definitely accomplish what I was talking about.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. So, tagging onto that a little bit, is it reasonable to ask them to provide examples of prior public engagement programs? Like, you know, programs that they designed in previous processes?
It is, just not here yet. So I, when we get to that section, I will remind you that you had.
All right, all right, okay. And, and is it reasonable to ask if they, that they specify if applicants are ICMA members, and tell me that's also downstream as well? Is that, right? And is it, at some point, for applicants to provide some kind of video highlight reel, or some sort of thing like that?
That comment directly, Councilmember Harris, would be in that initial meeting when you meet with your consultant, because that's really what you're going to do, right? They'll prob, again, I don't, right, that they'll want to get your criteria in terms of what is the ideal process. So that would be something that you would want to give that feedback to the consultant.
Never mind.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes. Would it be helpful to, and again, this is one of the things we have to decide here, is, okay, are we hiring a city manager, or, as in the case that we've had before, is a city manager slash economic development director?
That, that.
Because I think it would greatly, you know, determine the pool.
But I think that, okay, go ahead.
Yes, it would help determine the pool and make it, you know, more targeted for what the council would be looking for, but my recommendation is you bring that, that point to the consultant, right? This is just helping the council, secure the consultant to start to build the recruitment plan and the candidate profile on your behalf. So just a little early, I think, for this process.
Any further questions? I do have one, a recommendation that probably somewhere between 10 and 11, to have, that the recruiter have comprehensive media search capabilities. It seems like that's maybe a no-brainer, anybody can type in Google, but just, I think that that's going to be a component that they will need to be adapt at. That's all I had. Councilmember Hone.
So, are you, when you were talking about the media, you, isn't that part of what the background checks and some of the other things they do? You're just making sure that's a component of that?
Well, that somebody's going to check their Facebook pages, their Instagram. I just think that that's helpful to make sure, maybe our, maybe our candidate isn't out there, but I think that a recruiting firm needs to be capable of doing some pretty extensive social media digging. You can put a lot of things, you can check on their college degrees, on their job performance, but if they're inappropriate, add on Facebook and nowhere else. See, that.
If I may weigh in, on the HR side, that's not typically something we would recommend because there's issues of free speech.
Mm-hmm.
So you need, my, you would need to be careful about that.
How you search.
Yeah, what you're searching, what you're basing your decision on, because people do have rights to free speech. So, I do think that, as written, this is the appropriate background to do on this type of candidate, in addition to the criminal.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
And not to beat a dead horse, but the reason I mentioned, you know, having the vendor have the capability to do a highlight reel, is that it has been fascinating to me, just looking at city manager searches and other, if you can see the city manager in action on the dais, it just speaks volumes as to who they are. And so, to my mind, if they, if, if the vendor has the sophistication to, you know, ask applicants, you know, show us some moments from, you know, when you were at the dais, or in your work life, it just speaks volumes, far beyond just the written page. So, I'm done.
If I may comment to that, Councilmember Harris? I think what you're describing would be potentially, if there's agreement from the rest of the council, again, that would be later in the process, and that would really be defining what you guys would want to see as part of their application materials, right? So you may say, as part of, you know, we're going to do resume only, and you guys may decide to do supplemental questions, and we'd like to see, you know, a video or a presentation you've done at the dais, and have them submit.
And I'm not being argumentative, I'm just, I just want to know that the vendor has that experience, or has that technical, you know, they've used that tool, those tools to hire people, that's all.
Do you have any, well, assuming that the rest of the council is agreeable, do you have some suggestions on the language?
The vendor will demonstrate their experience in gathering examples of the candidate's Or examples of the candidate's, video examples of the candidate's performance. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I have no comment. I guess, I'm waiting for the direction from the council, the rest of the council.
I think that would be.
Maybe just put media search capability, and then we can decide.
I'll, you know, I've already gone, but the thing is, I've looked at, you know, city managers in other cities, and you watch a city council meeting in another city, and in five minutes, you can, you just get a lot from the affect and, you know, how the city manager handles themselves in something like a city manager's report.
I think that's day-two type stuff. I think it's day-two type stuff. I, it's really, it's day-two type stuff. I, I mean, we're really talking about after we get the applicants, and, and, I mean, in, it's day-two stuff, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Nutty. Councilmember Grace Matsui, did you?
I tend to agree with Councilmember Nutting, because I think, I'm trying to figure out where that would fit into this proposal for the recruitment of the recruitment firm. So I'm just trying to figure out where it would go. But I do think that it is something that we could talk about in terms of hearing in their proposal, what, what ways they, let's see. Review application materials, maybe we could expand in number six about what application materials could include, which doesn't include a portfolio, or a writing sample, or a video. And maybe that's one way to highlight that those are things that we are interested in, is including them as examples of point number six. But again, I think that's more about the method of how the executive search firm is gonna function, rather than what we're looking in for the firm itself.
Do you feel like six is sufficient? Did you want to add any wording recommended? Okay.
No, I, I don't wanna carry on, it's just that, it's just that you wanna, I'm just thinking in terms of this, that the vendor needs to be able to demonstrate that they, you know, know how to ask that of candidates, but.
Okay, do you feel like you have sufficient direction?
Yeah, I think that Councilmember Grace Matsui's suggestion makes the most sense to me, and just to sort of blow out what type of application materials we might be seeking. And I think that will meet Councilmember Harris's request.
Okay, any further comments on number two? Okay.
Okay, next slide, please. Next decision point, we're heading to section four, which is the selection process timeline.
Did you do proposal requirements, number three?
We'll come back, yeah. I'm just, I know I'm hopping around a little bit, but. So essentially, this would set, really, kind of the lag period, right? The timing from when we release the RFP to when the council actually makes their selection on the vendor. And so, as it's proposed right now, it would, once the RFP was ready to hit the streets, it'd be on the streets for at least 30 days. The council can change that, but I would not recommend anything less than 30 days. I'm not even sure that we can. I was doing some research on that today. And then you would want to identify to the vendors, you know, now that you have the proposals in, when are you gonna first look at them? So I said a week from the due date. And then, when would the council make their decision? And so I, I, or we recommended three weeks from the proposal due date, and I put an asterisk, because that's gonna be needed to tie to the city council meeting, right?
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
I think the, the release date is somewhat dependent upon you, AJ. How long do you need to get the RFP ready to go?
If I get firm direction tonight, we can definitely get in on the streets next week. And so essentially, then, that release date, if you guys are okay with like 30 days, the one week, the three weeks, that would set the actual dates within the process. So as long as the timeframe is agreeable for the council, then I would just, you know, project out from once it was on the streets.
Okay. So like, do you wanna, do you want us to specify next Friday as the release date? Is that what you're looking for from us here?
No, I guess I, the, the direction really from the council is, do you want it on the street 30 days? Do you want it on the streets for 45 days? You know, so I think just how long do you want it hanging out there? Did I give you guys long enough to do a review? I know that this is not all of your, your first job, so when we need to be able to have the materials you guys are gonna have to gather to be able to review, is three weeks reasonable for you guys to be able to make a decision? So that's the direction that I'm looking for.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
I think that the, basically, the three weeks from the proposal due date tied to the next, whenever that next city council meeting might be, sounds like a lot of work, but I don't know, because, and maybe this is another question that I have, I mean, are we talking about getting 50 RFPs, or are we talking about getting five? And?
Yeah, I have no idea. That's the one part that I don't know. I, I do think by the time we're done, we are asking for a pretty comprehensive list of services. So we may get a lot of people at firms, but we may not get a lot of firms that can handle our requests and our expectations, so.
Is that something that you would determine before we get to see these proposals, or?
Nope. I would simply be collecting them and getting them ready for you guys to review against, which we're gonna be talking about, the evaluation criteria, and then waiting on the council to make the decision. So I'll facilitate the collection, I'll work with any of the vendors who have questions about the RFP for clarification type piece, points. But ultimately, the decision on who is selected resides with the council.
I understand that, but I guess then, given what I'm hearing from you, then I don't think three weeks is enough. I'd rather go at least four.
So I wanna interrupt just for a moment here. We've got five minutes left till the, till our scheduled ending time, so we need to talk about how long we want to extend the meeting. Do I have, what would you recommend? Let's see, we have, here are two, two considerations. We also have.
I have, I have a motion, Mayor. I have a motion that, Mayor, I have a motion that we extend the meeting to cover this subject only, and the meeting ends as soon as the subject is over.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second? Any thoughts about that? Extend the meeting how long, again, Council?
Till, till this topic is over.
Just until this topic is over.
Until we're done with this topic, and then we're done.
All right.
I, I have an item of new business that is time-dependent. It is very brief. I would ask that you allow for that.
I do not accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. So, in our next meeting, so I am going to take a vote, till this is over, or, okay? All in favor of the motion on the table? Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, and opposed, Councilmember Oxiker, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris. So we continue the discussion.
Clarification, the motion passed 4-3, so we'll just go to the end of the subject, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, what I last heard from Councilmember Steinmetz was four weeks for the selection of firms. So basically, that would give the council four weeks to make their decision, and then hopefully be able to do that at a city council meeting, to formally direct the city to engage in that contract.
Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then I have Councilmember Mahoney.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, under our council rules, extending the meeting past 9:00 PM requires approval of three-fourths of the council members who are present. So that motion failed.
Okay.
But we still have three minutes if we want to consider a new motion that might have three-fourths council member support. Two minutes.
I move to extend the meeting to the end of this item with an allowance for a new items for consideration.
I have a motion and a second. It's gonna have to be quick discussion, Councilmember Mahoney.
Quick discussion. The, the only reason why I supported Councilmember Nutting's one is, is it's snowing out, we've got public here, and we got staff, and the safety of the residents is, I think, the primary focus here. I think that, that new business and so forth can be brought up at the next meeting.
Forgive me, this is time-dependent, this is an airport issue that involves the state, that's why I brought it up during Mr. Hempstead's thing. This is literally the only meeting, you know, I do not like surprises, and I would not bring this up if it was not a once-in-a-generational, I'm not kidding here, thing. So I beg the coun, I beg the council's indulgence.
Okay. Pardon? I'm, I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor of the extension to the, all in, all in favor of the extension with the extra item? That's Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiker, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Harris, and myself. All right. So, and opposed, Councilmember Mahoney and Councilmember Nutting. So in a vote of five to two, we're extending the meeting for the end of this subject and to hear Councilmember Harris's subject. Okay, do I need to say anything else? Did I miss something? Okay, we're extended? Go ahead.
Okay, we were discussing the four weeks.
Okay, question. Councilmember Grace Matsui?
I don't have a question. I do think that three weeks is sufficient to review those. I would guess that you would get closer to 10. RFP responsive that actually meet your criteria, I, I do not expect it to be a large number. And also, if we decided to have a special meeting, rather than a regularly scheduled city council meeting in order to get this moving, we could certainly schedule an additional meeting just to address those proposals.
Any other, any more discussion on this item? Yes, Councilmember Mahoney?
So, the thing is, is that we set the date, release date, say, next Friday is the tentative date, and you've got the 30 days for the proposal, et cetera, on and on. The fact is, is if you run into challenges or need more time, then we can address that at a later date, right? Correct?
Run into challenges, right?
So.
Run into challenges, like?
I said, say we run into challenges in this process, and you come back to us and go, this is something unexpected, we can, we can add more time to this process if we need to.
Yeah, in terms of the selection of the firm, but not for the, yeah, for the, the time that the RFP is on the street. You wanna be consistent.
Okay. So we do, we do have the ability to extend it later if we want to on the, on the last two. So I think we're okay with the three weeks. On the, especially on the last one that, that you thought might, we might need more time? Agreed.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
And forgive me if this is redundant, but is 30 days optimal for, is there any benefit in making a larger window? Or, or do you get, you know?
Apologize for interrupting you. No, I, I think 30 days is sufficient enough. I've already had vendors reach out to me, inquiring about information about our RFP, so people who do this type of work are aware already that we are gonna be in the market looking for a city manager and likely a recruitment firm. So I think 30 days will yield you guys enough responses to be able to select a vendor.
Good.
Okay. Are you, so you're looking for your, our opinion right now on this, correct?
Mm-hmm.
30 days, if we're good with the 30 days, everybody who's in favor of the 30 days? Yes? Anybody opposed to the 30 days, would like more? Looks like you got your direction. Okay.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Next slide, please. So we're now in section five. This is where we are setting what the qualifications and experience should be of the vendor. The council has some options. Bullet point one, for them to be sort of minimally qualified to even submit us a proposal, if you will. They need to be able to demonstrate within the past three years that they've worked with public entities similar to our city to conduct this type of recruitment, and that we're also interested to know that within the past two years, they've been able to successively place at least one executive candidate with a municipal government. And then bullet point two is then provide some brief information about your, the company's history, the size, the number of clients you have, and any other information that might aid us in making the decision on the vendor. I do wanna mention that bullet point number one is really, you don't necessarily have to keep that recommendation. It's designed to ensure that we are not a practice city for other recruitment firms, and that anyone that would be applying to be considered as one of the potential vendors has proven experience, proven experience in running these type of recruitments. And I think the only way to ensure that is they need to demonstrate that they have done the work. That may inherently limit some of the people that would be able to apply, but we would know that anyone who did apply has demonstrated experience. So the question to the council is, do you want to leave the qualifications and experience as is? And, or do you wanna make some modifications? We could also add some additional criteria that you would want the firm to have. This would be the place to do that.
It's like, you're good. Okay, Councilmember Harris?
Could we establish a preference, rather than a hard, you know, you must have within the past 36 months? Or maybe that's, I mean, again, I don't know what I don't know, but maybe they've just worked with other-sized city, with larger cities in the last two, three years? Or is that unusual?
I think the council has the latitude here to put in, you know, whichever qual, whatever qual, baseline qualifications that you would want a vendor firm to have. So if you don't want it as restrictive, my word, not yours, we could, we could say, we could make it less specific, right? Would, would, I can think on the language a little bit, I apologize a little.
Will be given those who have, you know, more recent experience with cities of 33,000 and so. But I'm just, you know, I don't know what I don't know, and it, you know, there may be great recruiters who have worked with different-sized cities in recent years. I don't know, maybe not.
So really, the, the comment about public entities similar to the city of Des Moines kinda goes back to the council's point about some of that information in the background about our city, right? What we could do, Councilmember, is maybe take out the specific numbers, but just must demonstrate that they have worked with public entities similar to the city of Des Moines, and that they have had a successful placement, without putting specific, like, within the past three years, or within the past two years. So then you still get the capability to indicate to the vendors that we want people with proven experience. So that may be a suggestion.
Councilmember Grace Matsui?
I think that the language that you have here in point number one in section five actually covers part of the question that Councilmember Harris has. I don't think it's limiting to say entities similar to city of Des Moines. It doesn't mean like, oh, Dallas doesn't count. I do think it does provide a minimum experience level, so you aren't getting a handful of recruitment firms that have zero experience, let's say, for any kind of city. So I think that your concern is actually already addressed in the language that's here. I'm comfortable with having a minimum standard, that they should have some demonstrated experience in a municipal city manager search, recent, post-pandemic.
Any comments? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Matsui. I would want to see some recent experience. I think the recency is a biggie for that, and I don't think it's unreasonable for a firm that's currently active in this kind of search. Not that maybe they did it 10 years ago, doesn't mean they have to do it now. Well, I think this is a good qualification for a city.
Any other comments? I'm in favor of the language as well, 36, it reduces our work, and it gives us a pool that, you obviously know that there's a pool that fits into this category here, or you wouldn't have put it there, so I'm in favor of it. All right, looks like you have direction. Unless there's opposition, any? No? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So now we're headed to section seven. This is the evaluation criteria. This is the evaluation criteria. This basically indicates to the vendor what we are going to be looking at to formulate the decision on who you ultimately select. The council does have the opportunity, sort of beyond the RFP, to take the criterion to create sort of a scoring model that doesn't necessarily have to be released, but I just wanted to mention that this is just more for the proposer to understand sort of what they're being measured against, I guess. And so, one is the responsiveness of the proposal, their ability to perform the services, the response, the responses of the respondents' references. So, and I apologize that I didn't mention this earlier, but during that three-week period, I would recommend, assuming that you adopt the evaluation criteria, at least this point, that we are calling the references that these firms are going to provide and asking about their level of service, because not every firm is the same. The mythology for conducting the recruitment, so we get a little bit of idea of what their thoughts are on the best way to recruit for a position like this. The experience, who's going to be running it on our behalf, because that's the other thing. You know, we want to make sure that the consultant that is assigned to the council has the capability and the experience to be able to facilitate a governing body to coming to an agreement. The, the financial resources and the ability of them, oh, I apologize for a misspelling, to, you know, to perform the, the scope of services that we have outlined in the contract. And then, the other piece is, when can they start the process? We don't want to make a selection of a vendor and they're not even ready to work with us until, you know, May. I have the, the feeling that the council, once this decision is made, is going to be ready to go. So, I think they covered everything in there, but again, it's open for input and comment from the council.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just as I read number five there, experience and qualifications of the respondent, is that the respondent firm? But, I, and the question really, in my mind, was what I heard you say, which is, the individual who's going to be in charge of this contract, what are their qualifications? Do you see the distinction I'm drawing? Or is that a distinction without a difference?
I'm, now that I'm looking at this again, I'm wondering if, if the council is agreeable, and maybe I condense five and six together, because I think there's the experience sort of of the firm, and then potentially who they would assign. Because potentially, you could have a consultant, maybe, that is working with the council, but they have a advisor or someone that is more experienced, right, that on the backend that could help them with some of the pieces that maybe they may not be familiar. So, it may make sense for me, if the council is agreeable, to just, basically what we want to know is that whoever you put before us, they're experienced in this, and we want to know what their qualifications are. We want to know it as the firm, like, what is the type of business you do? Who do you normally work with? And who are you going to assign to us?
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I know a lot of people that have hired law firms, that's my field, you know, and this one guy talks to him, and they think, oh, he's going to be a great lawyer, and then he gets assigned to a junior associate. And I don't want, I don't want us to end up with a junior associate in charge of this. And that's, how do we address that? Is-
Sorry. I think that would be number six, right? Because it's the qualifications of the staff proposed for this project.
Councilmember Stein, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. The first sentence of evaluation process, number six, I would like that sentence to read, "The city council will evaluate all proposals." I understand that you will, you know, provide your top three or what have you, but, but I just want some kind of assurance that the council will see everybody who meets the baseline criteria.
So, that, we, we're on number seven right now, Councilmember. So, you were going to take six later, or we, we finished that one?
Well-
Right, we're on seven, evaluation criteria.
We can't, we can't go back? I just-
Okay.
I just want to look at, I, I would like the city council to be able to see everyone who applied that met the baseline criteria, whether it's the city's preference or not. Because you'll have recommendations, or not preference, but I assume you'll have recommendations.
I will not. My sole role in this process, unless the council asks me to do more, is just to facilitate the process. So, to answer questions about the RFP and to collect the documentation, and then to turn that over to the council, everything that we receive, and then the council would be making the decision in terms of, you know, what vendor you would be selecting. So, I'm just a point of collection in this process.
So, we get 37 legit RFPs, and the council will see 37?
Uh huh.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are still on number seven, and did anybody have any more input for AJ in regard to number seven? Okay. Counting the potomac.
Okay, then we're ready for the next slide. All right, so we're going to be hopping around a little bit. I tried to highlight, it's not that the, the council's input's not requested, but I just tried to focus on sort of the big ticket items. So, now we're just going to hop back around to some of the things that I didn't address initially, and to see if the council has any comments. So, section three is the proposal requirements, which is really just about how we want to receive the information. So, I wanted, I asked for it in PDF form. Some places get pretty specific. They're like, I want four pages, double spaced, whatever. For me, I don't want to make it, I don't want the vendor focused on the presentation of it. I want them to make sure that the content meets our scopes of services. So, this is my recommendation to kind of keep it simple for, to be able to receive the documents from the vendors.
Do you have a general nod on that? Okay.
Okay, now to section six. So, this, Councilmember Harris speaks to your comment. So, it says, "The city council will evaluate the proposals," so, and then that the city council will select the proposal most responsive to the city of Des Moines, your guys' requirements, ability, reference, references, and the fee. So, there will, basically what that says is that we're going to look at your qualifications as they match what we, the requirements that we have, and the cost of your services. So, that would be part of the consideration of the council. That's essentially what that's saying. And that, basically, just because you put a proposal in doesn't mean that we have to accept it. That's the intent of that, that section. And the last piece of that is, once you give it to us, it's ours.
Looks like you have general nods, any? Okay, keep going.
All right, thank you. So, what is that, seven?
Seven.
Basically, what this says to the vendor is that they will have some assistance from city staff to be able to facilitate the recruitment process. I mean, that could be making copies, being, you know, keeping the, working with the candidates when they get on site, coordinating with the council if they, you know, if it's just not feasible for them to contact you. So, basically, we're letting them know that we've identified city resources, because you do need that regardless. Even if you hire the firm, you're going to need some assistance from city staff. So, that's letting them know what's available to them to help facilitate the process. And at this point, it would be myself and my two HR analysts. I would run point, though.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
This is number eight.
Right.
Yeah.
City responsibilities.
Yeah, apologize, yeah.
Number eight.
Sorry. Went cross-eyed a little bit here.
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Okay, right underneath that is the right to reject. That's just restating what I already said. We don't have to accept your proposal. We don't want to. And then, 10 is, hey, if you have questions, direct them to me, and I would, you know, answer those questions that they would have.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the city to release the request for, for proposal, RFP, for an executive search for the city manager recruitment, consistent with the terms as decided by the city council. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? Looks like you've got a unanimous 7-0.
Okay, I just have one more minute, I hope. So, now that you guys have, I said assuming, but now that you guys have actually approved the motion, just so you guys know what the work that's going to happen moving forward, I'm going to go back and compile the edits that you guys have provided and update the RFP accordingly. Like I mentioned earlier, enhance the presentation, do the final review, make sure that it's representative of this, it meets the quality that it should when we put it out on the streets to the vendors. And then, we're going to be posting to the following, our city website, our social media platforms, ICMA, WCCMA, some direct solicitation. Like I said, I've had some executive search firms already reach out to the city. And then, we'll be putting it on the Washington Electronic Bid Solution, which is a platform where people that are interested in working with public entities go to look for these type of solicitations for, sorry, for requests for proposals. So, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we voted to move to new items for consideration, and Councilmember Harris had something I would like to ask. You, before you introduce this, a couple of questions, because this is very short. So, you have, you're responding to a conversation request from council, from Representative Orwell and Senator Kaiser, correct?
Yes.
And that you have spoken about this with the city manager briefly, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're, we are late. I'm going to ask you to be very brief in your explanation and direct about what you're, what you're asking.
You got it. I am asking the council for their support for this following sentence. "I would like the city to write a letter in support of the University of Washington Department of Environmental and Occupational Health Sciences to support their community grant application to cite a fixed air quality monitor within the city of Des Moines." They need this letter of support, which can be one paragraph, in order to obtain that grant within this session, thus the urgency, and they need that paragraph before our next city council meeting. So, that's, all we're doing is helping them get this grant, and then down the road, they will work with the city to find a place to have that monitor cited.
Do I have a second? A second from Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Any discussion or questions?
I'd like to hear from interim city manager, Tim George, please.
Thanks. I have a question. I guess, could this person contact us and, and let us know what needs to be in the letter? Or what they're requesting to be in the letter?
Tim Gould is going to, I believe I sent you an email from him earlier today, and did you get that? I don't know if you-
I did, but I wasn't sure. I don't think that referenced a letter.
So, he and Elena Austin, Dr. Austin, asked for a letter to put into their grant application. And they need to get their grant application in by next week, so before our next meeting.
So, they asked you for the letter?
Yeah, but you can confirm that.
No, I mean, I guess I'm just asking, did they do it like in an email? Could you forward that email to us?
Yes.
Or did they do it in a phone call?
Well, both. But, basically, they, it, it is always better for their application to show that the city is on board, and that's what they've asked of me.
Yeah, so I guess what I'd just ask is that, and I guess I can, I have the guy's email now, but I can send him an email and ask him what he would like in the letter.
Well, it's, it's simply, you know, that, that the city is-
Send the email, and that finishes the, the conversation. We're supportive of the idea.
Mm-hmm.
Let, let the city manager do his job, please.
Okay, so, any other questions? Do you, is that-
I have a comment. I'm, I, and until there's further proof that this is needed for the city manager, I'm, I'm really going to hold my vote. So, I'm going to sustain from voting.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, and I also, I mean, I want to see the information myself. You know, no disrespect to you, but I'd like to see it for myself and not what you tell me.
So, basically, a, you wanted to keep it short, so-
So, I'm not, I'm not going to look at, I'm not going to look at something, a picture of something and make a decision. I want to know more about it. And, and, and I want to see it from a source that I find credible.
I would just-
Okay, all right.
I do have a comment. I, the subject on the surface sounds, it is immediate, it sounds like it's immediate, and they want it right now, but, and it sounds very important. However, if it's that important, somebody should have sent information somehow to us. This is a city council business decision. And somebody drew me into something similar this weekend. You, you cannot come to a city who's responsible for taxpayer dollars and ask them to take an action on something that we haven't been presented any substantial information about. I know it was a request from a senator and a representative, but if this is, I agree, if this is all we have, you, you can't reasonably expect a city to do that.
May I respond?
You, that's my opinion. You may. Councilmember Oxiker.
Would this be, would this be subject to any of our city regulations? I mean, if they were proposing to put it somewhere where it didn't belong or anything like that, it would, it's something that would have to come back. I mean, it sounds like right now what he's, what he's requesting is simply saying, you know, we're interested in getting the grant. That doesn't mean it's actually going to happen.
It's not our grant. We are simply supporting the University of Washington-
Right.
-in their grant.
Right.
And as we did last year for another similar fixed site monitor, but that one is in C-TAC, we should also want one in the city of Des Moines to benefit our efforts.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mahoney, for your second time.
So, the cart's a little bit before the horse here. There was no designation and, by the council for any of this. It comes to us as a surprise. Obviously, working with state legislators, the city, or the city manager should have been involved in the thing. Need to know more. That's all I'm going to say.
Any other comment? Agreed. So, all in favor in support of-
May, um, may I respond?
You've spoken, you've spoken twice. You, would you, a vote of the council, you may speak a third time. Does the council raise their hand to allow him to speak a site, a third time? No. So, council, let's vote on this, please. All in favor of supporting this letter to support this grant, raise your right hand. Count, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiker, and Councilmember Harris, all opposed. Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself. Four, three, not in favor. Okay, thank you for your time. My, we are ready to, next-
I move to adjourn.
Well, excuse me, excuse me. Our next meeting date is January, excuse me, our next meeting date is January 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second.
So, moved, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.
We did it.
Well, we did it. We did, it was, it was bumpy.
No, that was-
Well, we did it. We did. It was, it was bumpy.